All right, council. Good evening and welcome to the September 3rd, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting. And Mayor Debbie Burtland, will the city clerk please call roll?
Councilmember David Wiesentiner. Councilmember Bassett. Councilmember, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Salim Nice.
Here.
Mayor Debbie Burtland.
Here.
Councilmember Benson Wong.
Here.
And Councilmember Lisa Andrell.
Here.
Thank you.
Do you want to call for Councilmember Wyker?
Councilmember Wyker will be joining us later about 7 o'clock.
6:30 or 7:00. Okay, great. So with that, our first item of business is to approve the agenda. May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
First and second and all in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion passes and agenda is approved. The City Council will now recess into executive session for approximately 60 minutes to discuss pending or potential litigation with legal counsel pursuant to RCW 4230-110. One aye. Thanks. Deb, it is a little cold up here if you don't mind. Thank you. Okay, so, welcome back. The executive session adjourned at 6 o'clock. And with that, we move on to the next item, which is a study session in Agenda Bill 5597, Preliminary Public Safety Planning for Light Rail. And for this, I am turning it over to, I believe, the chiefs. Chief Holmes, chief, welcome.
Okay, good evening, council. For the record, my name's Ed Holmes, your police chief, and with me is Steve Heitman, the fire chief, and Dave Jokanen, our operations commander. And as Commander Jeff Magnin gets our little PowerPoint up here, I'll just give a brief intro to the topic here. This is our preliminary public safety plan for light rail, and I guess emphasis is on preliminary at this point. We're still four years away, and we have a number of questions, quite a few questions that have yet to be answered. But I guess the point, the main point here is that the community can be reassured that as your public professional, public safety professionals, we are taking this seriously. We've met a number of times and come up with what we deem to be five areas of concern. So the five areas of concern that we're paying attention to are what we want to go through right now. Dave and I have met with Sound Transit and Metro Police Chiefs, talked about their plans, where we are today so far. We've also talked to other police departments regarding their experience with light rail stations and those who anticipate light rail coming to their communities. I know the fire folks have talked to their counterparts with same topics. And then together, your Mercer Island Police and Fire folks have been in discussions together. So, the five main areas that we've talked about have been, we'll pull it up here. So, safety for bicyclists and pedestrians. Number two, safe and effective vehicular traffic flow. Three, individual and personal safety. Number four is timely responses to emergencies. And number five is minimizing the negative impacts on parks, town center, and the neighborhood. So as we look at that first one, and again, this is more about the what we're looking at, and it's not so much the how. So, what you will not hear is how we plan to address all these with number of staffing and hours and strategies such as that. This really is more about, these are the things we're paying attention to. So, one of our very primary concerns really is the safety for pedestrians and bicyclists. We average about five accidents along North Mercer Way between the Park and Ride and 76th every year. And so, we know that with increased pedestrian traffic there, increased bicycle traffic, we have concerns. Especially since, as you all know, we lost the SOB access to westbound 90. That has put more vehicular pressure and traffic in through the town center to include westbound North Mercer Way. So when we have that addition, the additional increment of traffic from that, combined with this potential for significantly more pedestrians, that is a concern. The accident traffic data itself, I'll have Dave just speak for a moment on those five crashes we get every year and what those have looked like.
Yeah. So, you know, we looked at the corridor, 7600 block to the 8200 block of North Mercer Way, and it's a busy corridor, and especially during the, you know, peak commute times in the morning and in the evening. And it's an area also that we work, you know, pretty heavily as patrol. We average about 450 traffic stops in that corridor because you do have the cyclists, you have pedestrians, you have folks that are leaving the town center or coming into the town center, folks that want to access the lid or use that area, and then the park and ride. So we try to have a strong presence there. The collisions that we do find there, mostly car-car collisions. We do have some car versus bike collisions and a small number of car-ped collisions. Most of the collisions are intersection collisions and collisions that, you know, not only at the intersections on the roadway, but also intersections where folks are for the car-bike crossing either on the bike path, entering, exiting the park and ride, or on 81st in those areas where they're crossing intersections as they make their way, you know, east or west on that bike path.
Thanks. And as you know, hours of darkness increase as we get toward winter hours, and so adequate lighting, we mentioned that up here, it's important to ensure that there's adequate lighting, especially at these pedestrian crossing areas. There's also engineered pedestrian safety enhancements we've seen. Sometimes those can be refuge islands as you cross streets, and I'm not sure what this will ultimately look like. But again, these are the things we're discussing, these are the beginning stages. Do we have pedestrian refuge places in the middle of a lane as they cross, as you see sometimes at roundabouts? So there are some things that we are hoping the traffic engineers can take a serious look at to help in mitigating some of the concerns as we have pedestrians crossing the streets here.
Benson.
I guess in the description of the five accidents that you typically get, I didn't hear one that involved pedestrians and a bicycle. Is that true, or have you had those?
I don't have a pedestrian bicycle collision during that five-year timeframe. You know, there may be interactions, I think there are close calls, there are incidents that we never get called on, that never get reported to us, but you hear about them. But I don't have an official report there. And some of them are also not necessarily categorized as reportable accidents because it's on a bike path, and a reportable accident needs to be on a state roadway, highway.
Okay, as we move to the second area, it's a safe and efficient vehicular traffic flow. So it's important, as I mentioned before, but the added pressures on the town center areas, that we can have traffic flowing efficiently. And there are adaptive traffic signals, they call it, where they're timed such that pelotons, if you will, of cars can keep on moving through the town center. So, the timing is important, that they can move, traffic can keep flowing, even though it might be a little bit slower, but at least it's all still flowing. Also, we don't want intersections blocked. I know fire expressed, police as well, but we have smaller vehicles, fires expressed concerns with blocked intersections. Steve, do you want to speak to some of that?
Yeah, so one of the things that we're concerned about is that a lot of the access for us to the north end of the island, to especially some of your bigger facilities, the community center, Shorewood, Covenant Shores, we actually go along 80th and then go catch North Mercer Way from there. So for us, it's important that these are not blocked and that signals are in place, even in areas where they aren't currently, to allow us to change the lights. You may or may not be aware of that, that we have the ability, it's called an opticom, it's a flashing light, that as we drive forward, we change the signals so that we always hit a green light. Don't drop in behind fire engine so to get to places faster, we don't like that. So that is very important for us for that access. And that's one of my concerns is, depending on how this comes out, is whether or not buses are going to be blocking some of those if they get caught in the cross traffic and we're waiting for that. So that's definitely something that we're focused on as well.
And again, having direct access for the buses onto and off of I-90, and then just simply maintaining open lines of sight for not only vehicular traffic, but for pedestrians and bicycles as well. And if we move to individual and personal safety, not sure if many are familiar with what they call crime prevention through environmental design, or SEPTED. There's trainings in the SEPTED arena, a lot of things fall under that category. But essentially, it's engineering or designing things so that it reduces crime. It enhances, it increases the fear. If you're going to commit crime, the chances of you getting caught are increased, so it discourages crime on the, from the criminal element there. And for the personal safety, if you're walking in a well-lighted area, and again, I'll say with lighting, it's not like that's the answer to everything. I have heard some recent concerns about lighting as though we think that's just the end-all, be-all. It is not. But lighting certainly does help if it's in a well-lit area. We want to avoid landscaping that blocks certain areas, so we don't want people hiding behind bushes or being dragged behind bushes. So there are some, I guess relatively simple things that we can do, we collectively, as this is designed. And if we're intentional and mindful about how this is designed, we can reduce opportunities for crime to happen. Part of that also, of course, includes visible presence, police presence. I am not sure about private security. When Dave and I met with Sound Transit's police chief and Metro's police chief, they made mention of private security being at some of these stations. They did not know if that would be the case for Mercer Island yet, but we would certainly want some presence at the station itself. We've talked a little bit about bathrooms, those questions have come up. This station will be designed without a bathroom. Some may say, well, that's an inconvenient arrangement there, but other police departments have experienced a lot of problems with bathrooms at these stations, so bad things can happen in bathrooms. So, we currently don't have a public bathroom at the Park and Ride at the north end right now, so this would not be anything different. But it is one of those things intentionally designed to prevent some bad things that could otherwise happen in the bathroom area.
Interesting. Benson, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. I have a few questions, chief, on this topic. So, I mean, looking at the Agenda Bill, it's mentioned that SEPTED, is that the correct pronunciation of that, should be incorporated, and that surveillance and security cameras should be incorporated in the design. Is there a way to make those things mandatory? I mean, basically, what you described makes perfectly good sense, but when you say they should be, or at least the Agenda Bill says they should be, I'm just wondering whether or not there's a way that the city can require that, and if so, who do you make that request of?
That is a great question. I don't have the answer to that. I'm saying they should be, I don't have the authority to make that happen, but I'm sure in these discussions we have as we progress, I would imagine, I would certainly hope, I'll say it that way, I would certainly hope that we could have that incorporated as our list of, I guess we could call them requirements. Again, we're pretty early in on this, so these are ideas and concerns that we have that we want to address. And how they get addressed, I'm not quite sure, but...
Chief, sorry.
Yes?
If I could interrupt, Jesse Bon, your interim city manager, apologies. Jason Kittner had to leave today unexpectedly due to a family matter. If he were here, I think what he would remind all of us is currently in this area where Sound Transit is moving from a 30% design to 60% design. And in that process, and I believe Councilmember Wong, correct me, you were speaking specifically about the SEPTED design standards. So as we, as Sound Transit is moving from 30 to 60, we will be continuing to engage with them and evaluating the design for things like SEPTED conformance. And our chiefs have been joining us in those discussions, so there's still an opportunity to inform the design. Does that address your question?
That does. I mean, so the ultimate decision-maker in that, of course, is Sound Transit. And so, we're just, again, we can advocate for the adoption of SEPTED and security and surveillance cameras.
Yes.
And then, I have...
Benson, I'm going to ask you to hold, because I see Lisa also has a question.
Oh, sure. It was fine if Benson wanted to follow up, but question is whether there is, are surveillance cameras right now in the Park and Ride area?
Yes. Yeah, they're a pretty robust system of surveillance cameras in the Park and Ride area right now, and we utilize those cameras, we get access to those cameras, and utilize that to try and, you know, figure out some of the crimes that are happening over there.
Sure. So, follow-up on that, sorry, but what are your thoughts about the adequacy of the lighting in the lower level? And that Park and Ride, because that's where I usually park, and it feels a little creepy in there, to be quite frank.
Yeah. Well, in looking at the Park and Ride in perspective to the previous Park and Ride that we had, the new Park and Ride, just, and I have to go and run the numbers, it's just anecdotally, it, we have lesser reports of theft, motor vehicle problems, car thefts in that facility than we used to have in the single-level Park and Ride that was in that location. So, overall, our reports of crime in the Park and Ride aren't significant.
Great. Dave?
Yeah, thanks.
And then, Salim, did you have a question?
So just to clarify something for folks that are watching at home, is that the video cameras are monitored by Sound Transit, not by NYPD?
Correct.
And the second thing is, I believe they're all sort of trailing retroactively, so there's not an active monitoring to say, here comes Dave Jokanen, the bad guy, I'm going to call Norcom because I see him doing something nefarious, correct? It's sort of after the fact.
After the fact, we go back after the fact and get the video, and then go through the video and see if we can identify individuals who are responsible for vehicle break-in.
So I don't want people to give the impression that if...
They're not monitored.
There was active proactive monitoring of the news station, that they'll see a crime being committed. Like in the UK, they actually do that, but I don't think they have the capability here to do that.
Okay, with Benson, and then I'm guessing that there's still a fair amount of material to get through, so hopefully we can move on.
I'll be very quick. Chief Holmes, you mentioned this, you alluded to the issue of Sound Transit Police and maybe private security firms. So, and you mentioned that Sound Transit hasn't yet decided against whether or not the Mercer Island Station warrants that kind of additional security. I don't want to put words in your mouth, I guess my question is, do we know what criteria Sound Transit uses to make that decision? And if we don't, can you get it so we know what factors they will consider?
In the discussions that we had with Sound Transit Police Chief and Metro's Police Chief, they had too, they still had too many questions as to what this would look like on Mercer Island for them to be able to know whether that would warrant having private security there or not. So, I think they too had a lot of questions. They made mention that they will have an increase in officers on the trains and buses. So, that's part of the discussion, what does that look like? How many more officers? Will they spend time at the station? Are they only on the buses and trains? Do they get off? How do they interface and work with the private security? What is the jurisdictional area of the private security? So, in the meeting we had, we had probably, we walked away with, from the meeting, probably with as many questions as we did answers. So, it continues to be, I guess, recognized by all of us that we're still really early, but we are glad we're talking to each other. So, after this, we have the next area, number four, I believe it is, is timely responses to emergencies. We need to be able to get to places quickly, and this becomes particularly important, I think, for fire. Again, they have the large rigs that they need to get through, and especially when we have responses that require multiple vehicles. So, Steve, if you want to speak to that.
Yes. I was involved with the station early on as far as the Fire and Life Safety Committee. So one of the things that we made sure of was that there would be access. So the pads in front of the stations at street level will actually be able to handle the weight of a fire engine or even a ladder truck if they had to come up on there. So, access for us was really important, especially if we have other departments arriving from off-island for help. And so, we're looking at that type of response, we're looking at where the fire department connections are located, setting up our plans, pre-incident plans, so that if we're willing to be going to the station, depending on time of day, we may use 80th, we may use 77th. It also, you know, will vary on, again, Sound Transit has not finalized where some of those are going to be with, because of costs associated, so they're working on that. But we're looking at all sorts of things in order to access either above that station or down on that station itself. That is one of the, thank you. That's one of the things that we also are asking them to include is the rolled curb so that we can pull up anywhere we need to. Again, being concerned for buses that are perhaps parked there for their break or anything like that, we want to make sure that we can get by those and then off the roadway and not block that as well if possible.
Okay, then the last slide is talking about minimizing negative impacts on our parks, town center, and neighborhoods. And so, we do want to make sure there's adequate security at the station and at the intercept itself. We want to have visible police presence. And part of that, it's important to have a good visible police presence, and I think it's also important that the police officers pay attention to some of the smaller-level crimes. So, we want to make sure that the bus area isn't fraught with lots of small, well, crime period, but particularly the smaller quality-of-life crimes. So we want to pay attention to the crimes or potential crimes that can happen, and through the SEPTED designs, and then having a strong police presence there. We're hopeful that will help. We also want to have wayfaring signs so that, or wayfinding signs, so people know if they're looking for the bus, how do I get onto the train from the bus drop-off to the train? If they want to get to the town center, how do they do that so that they're not left wandering through some of the neighborhoods disappointed that they can't find a town center because they went north instead of south from the bus intercept? So, we want to make sure that signage is there so people are directed to the areas that they want to go to. Again, so we minimize wandering through neighborhoods when that's not where people want to go, if they're looking for the town center, that they can actually find that. And so, ongoing, we have...
I'm going to start, Bruce has a question.
Sure. Thank you. I'm sending us back a slide, though, if you don't mind. Chief Heitman, I'm sure you know volumes more about this than I do, but I'm sure I've heard in the past that pedestrians are a bit safer when you have hard curbs rather than rolled curbs because it keeps vehicles off of the pedestrian space. I completely understand that you want your vehicles to be able to get out of the roadway, but can you speak just a little bit about how you balance that against the desire to keep pedestrians safe from other vehicles moving out of the roadway?
That, great question. We have not had that discussion with Sound Transit. I do know that in talking to other departments, that they typically will have at least an area where they'll have their rolled curb so that they can get their apparatus up on there. I don't think it would be the entire facility, especially where there's probably a high volume of pedestrian traffic. But we would definitely be looking that. And again, it's a long way off, there's still a lot of planning that has to go into this, so that is definitely something we can take into account. Thank you.
Okay, then just the ongoing. So we'll continue to work with our partner agencies, the other police departments in the area, Metro and Sound Transit. And as we get closer to this and as we start to know more and learn more, our safety plans will come more into focus. And I realize at this point, they are fairly broad, and I mentioned that at the beginning, intentionally so, because we lack the data to really dial this thing in. And then we want to assess resources, resource availability. This is something that we are concerned with, we are paying attention to it. It's potentially a big change in this area, so I want people to know that we've had quite a few meetings, and we will continue to meet regularly as this comes into focus and we learn more, because we want to be prepared for this. So, still a lot to learn on our part, a lot of data to still collect, a lot of decisions still need to be made. But as we move forward, our safety plans will come more and more into focus and become a little more concrete as we move forward. So, if there's any other questions, we're happy to address them. And again, at this point, it's sort of a check-in four years early, but a check-in nevertheless on where we're at with some things.
Great, thanks. We have Dave, and then we have Benson.
So, so I get with fire, it's more of a traffic consideration, how you guys are going to move around. With police, do you guys have a gut feel for how it will impact the operation, what your operations would look like post-train? Or is it just too early to say?
You know, I wish I could answer that with more clarity, but I can't. I just, I don't yet know what this is going to look like. I don't know where it's going to ultimately be, I don't know how many buses are going to come, I don't know how many people, I've heard, again, wide ranges, and so my concerns vary depending on what that could ultimately look like. So, I guess I'm prepared to say at this point, we're paying close attention to what this is starting to look like as it develops, but for right now, I just, I'm at a place where I don't want to get ahead of myself, but at the same time, we're paying attention to this.
Great, thanks. Benson, and then Salim.
Well, okay, I'll narrow it to one question, then I'll come back. But I guess, you know, and it may be too early, I appreciate that. And maybe this is also a question addressed to the city manager as well, but as we're talking about the operation of the light rail station after it comes to fruition, whether it's private security, whether it's Sound Transit, additional security people, I guess, has there been discussion, or at least, you know, regarding who pays for what? I mean, I guess, to the extent we have police officers, you know, patrolling or the bicycle patrol, I assume that's our cost, but if there's additional security down in the bus platform, I'm sorry, the subway platform, I assume that's a Sound Transit cost? I mean, that's not us. I wouldn't think so. But have you had that kind of discussion at all?
Well, I would just add, whose jurisdiction is it? Once you're down there in the area with the trains, is that Mercer Island jurisdiction, or is that Sound Transit wash-up?
I am under the understanding that Sound Transit and/or Metro, but I believe Sound Transit would pay for this private security. That's my understanding. I did specifically ask Sound Transit if they would pay for additional Mercer Island Police to police the area, and I was told very clearly, no. So Sound Transit will pay for their own police officers on the trains and Metro, the buses, but they will not pay for us to have additional Mercer Island Police officers. So I did ask that question, and again, I'm under the understanding that any private security would be paid for by Sound Transit, but that's my understanding, I don't state that as a fact for sure. That's what I know.
Okay, we have Salim, then I'm going to take a turn, then Dave.
So, look, I appreciate you putting the presentation together, and I see how you've organized it, and I see that tactically and strategically you're thinking forward and looking at four years ahead. This council right now is working with Metro to gain their concurrence, working within the context of the Sound Transit settlement agreement to... the context of the Sound Transit settlement agreement to design, and we're the 30% design on the bus intercept. As our chiefs, our chief of police and chief of fire, responsible for our life safety on Mercer Island, we trust you guys. I want to make sure that you have the opportunity tonight to tell us what to do or not to do in those negotiations, because while you're planning four years ahead, we're planning right now. And if we have a choice of how many buses per hour are coming through, what the scale of the bus intercept is, how sprawled it is, ingress, egress, all of these physical curb cut infrastructure issues, the things that you'll tactically be responding to four years from now, tell us now, tonight, what to do or not to do if you have guidance, because that, to us, will serve you better four years from now.
Well, I appreciate the question. I'd say some of the design pieces that might not be where you got involved, as far as the actual design is at a rolled curb or not, I'm not sure that you got involved with that. I guess I would just say that taking these five areas that we've highlighted today, bringing those forward or being mindful of the discussion points we've had around these five areas, when you talk to Sound Transit and/or Metro, just remembering these might be helpful in how that informs your discussion. And of course, the more buses and the more people, the more of a concern we have. And I think that's just intuitive. I think anybody could understand that. So to the extent numbers are minimized, my concerns go down. As those numbers grow, with buses coming on the island, number of pedestrians, where they cross, as those numbers grow, so do my concerns. So rather than give you talking points on specifics, it's just in general, if you take these five areas forward and remembering that bigger volumes equals bigger concerns for both the fire chief and myself, that would, I think, would help inform your discussions.
And on the fire side for this, I've talked to several fire chiefs that have light rail stations within their jurisdictions and even now transit centers, and none of them have noticed a significant uptick in calls from having these facilities within their jurisdictions. We, you know, right now, we receive phone calls of people who pull off the freeway because they were feeling sick, will respond to that. So it's the same thing here, and I don't foresee at this point this creating a call volume such as we're going to have to change our current staffing. But again, it's something that we'll keep an eye on. No one else has this type of bus intercept, and so that could make a difference in it. And again, as we move forward with this, we'll definitely be keeping an eye on that. But I would say our biggest concern is that traffic flow and access.
Okay, I'm going to take a turn, and then Dave, and then I'm thinking that Benson probably has some more questions.
Just one.
Just one more, for now. So in essence, you know, I think what we're all saying universally, you at the table, us up here at the DAS and city staff, is that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, meaning the extent to which we do some of our basic homework right now insofar as, you know, what some of these design standards are, the SEPTED, making sure that all of that is optimized as we go, not just from 30 to 60, but obviously from 30 to 100, whatever that looks like, is going to be super important. And also then, of course, the design elements themselves. One of the good things I was noting when I looked at your five different bullet points, that a lot of that was actually covered in some of the communication we've had to date, so it's great to say it. It's going to be another thing to enforce it. So I think for me, the point is a concerted effort that comes from public safety, that comes from the staff, that comes from council and our ongoing conversations with Sound Transit and Metro, that says, no matter what, no matter how, we are expecting the highest level of safety standards to be implemented. We are expecting to be at the table and reviewing in advance so that we aren't doing that pound of cure versus the ounce of prevention that's right now. So just kind of my two cents there. Dave?
Yeah, so Saleem actually asked the question that I was going to ask, so I think you said it as well as anybody, which is, the only thing I would tack on to that is, it seems to make sense to me, given the answers that you've given, as we, you know, as we're trying to negotiate with these parties right now and get you what you optimally need, that there are gating levels that you could probably speak to. So when you say, if it's this big, then I get worried, if it's that big, then I get really worried. So if it's, you know, 5,000 people a day, what kind of requirements do you have? If it grows to 10,000 people a day, what kind of requirements do you have? So that we have some level of preparation for Sound Transit to be able to say, look, it appears that no one knows what to expect, which is a little crazy to me on the Sound Transit side, that they can't give us some more definitive numbers about ridership and where people are ingressing and egressing. But to the extent to which we can estimate, you know, blocks of gates of people or humans or, you know, additional capacity that we're taking on, what does that mean to you all operationally and what would you need in order to deal with that number of people or vehicles or incidents that you're responding to? And I think we have sort of that packaged, so as we begin to get, to your point, as we begin to get closer and we see more reality, we're not planning as we go, we're sort of saying, okay, well, we pull off Plan C off the shelf because now it's 10,000 people. So if there's anything you can do to help us prepare for those kinds of conversations, because it's probably resources that we're asking for on your behalf, in addition to some of the design elements, that would be, sort of help us help you if there's a way to do that.
Okay, and I think, at least at this point, I'm prepared to say, the more we know, the more we'll be able to share what does that look like? Because we've heard numbers from 4,200 people to 14,000. I'm not quite sure where that one came from, but, I mean, they vary so greatly. And again, at this point, I realize it's a bit opaque to say, you know, the fewer the people, the fewer the concerns and vice versa. But I'm not at a place where I can say, hey, at 5,000 people or at X number of people, that triggers a need for this additional resource. I'm not quite there yet. I will say this before I turn the mic off. I will say that I have really sincerely appreciated what I have felt to be like support and partnerships from not only the council, but a number of community members who have reached out to us and expressed concerns and how can we help and how can we support. So I think I said this at the last meeting, I do believe this is something that, as a community, we are looking at this, it's not just the police chief and fire chief or our staff, it's as a community, when we realize this change is coming, how do we collectively work together to get what we need? So that's, I think, the point you're making there, both of you. And as I understand that and have a better feel for it, I'll be more confident in whatever ask may be coming down the pike. At this point, again, it's more high level, and as we start to get more focused, I think we'll better understand what those resources might need to be.
Okay, Benson.
Chief, you know, you've heard public comments by a number of folks who express concerns about the possibility of additional criminal activity or what have you, once the station is operational. And I'm just curious whether or not, and granted, you know, the Mercer Island station is relatively small compared to some of these other stations that are already operational and those that are coming online. And I have no idea the number of people that will be coming through the Mercer Island station, but are you aware, if Sound Transit has, maybe in your conversations with your colleagues in other jurisdictions, are you aware of any studies that show uptick in criminal activity once a station is operational?
I can say, I haven't seen formal studies. I've heard anecdotally that the answer is yes, there has been uptick, there has been an uptick whenever you have these stations or larger numbers of people, transient people going from one platform to another. But I've not seen like a graph or a chart or formal study. But in talking to other police chiefs that have experienced new stations or bus stations, yeah, they do have some uptick there. That's why I said earlier, I want us to be able to pay attention to even some of the smaller level criminal activity. I want us to be on it. I want the message to be out there early that Mercer Island takes us very seriously and we pay attention to even the smaller level things. So, yeah, anecdotally, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Council, are there any further questions?
Just a quick one. Absent additional funding and given your stated goal, would you, if the transit center began operating, would you draw down the resources elsewhere on the island to support those goals? Would that be kind of the hand that you'd be forced to play?
Great question, and I think it would be something I'd have to look really hard at and discuss with my staff, because that's the option I would have. I mean, if there are no more resources, I would have to look at reallocating somehow, because I do believe it's important to have a strong police presence there, at least initially. And I don't know what initially means, it just means initially at this point, certainly a good police presence there. And depending on my staffing levels, so I mentioned a couple of weeks ago I was down, I think five officers now, it's four, because one came online. So depending on where my staffing level is at, how many vacancies I do or don't have at the time, that would make a big difference. So those are all discussions that we'd have to have sort of collectively, what are our priorities? How do we want to prioritize police resources? If there are no, if there's no additional funding, then how do we prioritize what we have right now? What's most important to the community? Those are discussions we'd have to have.
Okay. Jesse, maybe this is an opportunity for you to just give us an update, and there still seems to be vagueness about numbers, meaning the number of people who would be coming on and disembarking during those, you know, across those different scenarios. Can you let us know when there's going to be reasonable certainty, when we're going to really have firm numbers, or do we right now?
We do not. I can tell you that we are engaged with Sound Transit and ultimately also hoping to work with Metro to firm up that information. As you know, Metro has shared with us that their route planning is not scheduled to be done for a couple of years, but we hope to get some, I guess, updated information soon, Mayor, and as soon as we have that, we will share that with you and with the community. I will tell you, and the chiefs know, we have been trying and the numbers are not certain. I know that's been a source of frustration for all of you and the community as well, so it is at the top of our list.
Great, thanks. All right, council, seeing no more questions, I think we'll be able to go ahead and take a break before council comes back at 7 o'clock. So with that, 6:45, oh my gosh, I'm sorry.
That's right, we have that.
We have a second one.
We do, we have a funny schedule today, although the next, the next item is not scheduled until 6:45. That's the time we advertised.
Five-minute break. Thanks, sorry about that. Okay, council, I think we're going to go ahead and get started. Chief Holmes, you'll be leading this discussion?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Deb, are we ready to go? Super. So we just concluded our first study session, excuse me, which is the preliminary public safety planning for light rail. We'll now move on to our second study session item, which is Agenda Bill 5606, the Cougar Response Update.
Okay, let's go with this. Okay, again, Ed Holmes, your police chief. Joining me tonight is Jeff Magden, our services commander, and two personnel from Department of Fish and Wildlife, we have Kim Chandler and Brian Kurtson. So what I think I'll do is have Jeff introduce this more formally and then turn it over to the folks at Fish and Wildlife for some of the Q and A and the presentation piece of this. I know this has been a fairly big topic of interest for the community, so we thought it important to have the actual folks who know this stuff inside and out be the ones to present this. But Jeff, go ahead. But Jeff, go ahead.
So Jeff Magden, your services commander for the police department. I've been heading up the, kind of the response as the chief took a vacation, which I would forbid from this point on if it's a possibility. As you saw in your agenda bill, we've had a lot of engagement with the public with regard to the sighting of the cougar. The actual sightings that we've had, that we are calling confirmed sightings, are really the fifth and sixth. And what I mean by confirmed, it's not to call a citizen a liar or call a citizen, you know, blind or anything to that effect, as I have been told that I have done. It's more the proof that we're looking for. Unfortunately, in law enforcement, we can only prove what we can see and act upon. It's not what we know, it's what we can prove. And in this particular case, as you can see in that upper right-hand corner, I am told by Fish and Wildlife that that is a cougar. And that's what we've had to go on, which was the beginning of all of this, which was the fifth and sixth. Now, it's definitely the beginning and the beginning only. When this first started, we got the call, and we immediately engaged Department of Fish and Wildlife, not only because this is their jurisdiction, they're the experts. This isn't a person running through the backyards that just broke into a house. This is a very elusive creature to us. And quite honestly, we weren't sure how to respond to it. We engaged Fish and Wildlife early on. We started tracking, meaning that we kept track of the calls for service, the locations and sightings and things like that, and actually started mapping it, as did Fish and Wildlife. We also began our media outreach at that point, through Facebook, through Nextdoor, through, you know, any other media, to include the media like what is present here tonight with the broadcast media. And we tried to get the word out, hey, this is what we see, and this is what our plan is, and this is what we're doing, which I'll get into in just a minute. So the fifth showed up, it was on a surveillance, it happened the night before. The sixth was the same sort of thing, it happened the night before. It's seen here on the Ring camera from someone's surveillance. The very next day, we started looking at our police response. How are we going to respond to this? We engaged Fish and Wildlife, and we said, okay, what do you need us to do? They said, you know, go to the scenes of these sightings or any reporting, and look for signs of the cougar being there. So we're looking for physical evidence again, we're looking for paw prints, we're looking for, you know, anything else that would corroborate what was reported to us. Obviously, on the first two sightings, they were videos, we went with the video. That was pretty good evidence on my part. So we continued to look for whatever else came forward. In that amount of time, we have had twenty-nine calls for service related to cougar sightings. Now, twenty-nine makes it sound like there were twenty-nine sightings. Please understand, that's not the case. Of those, we've had the two confirmed. We've had seventeen unconfirmed sightings. Unconfirmed has been, I heard a noise in my backyard, I heard a hissing sound, I heard a growling sound, or I saw the tail of a cougar in the bushes, I am sure that I chased the cougar up a tree, that sort of thing. So the police response has been the same throughout, as Fish and Wildlife has asked us to do, which is get to the area, try to locate signs that the cougar was there. And then, if we can, chase it up into a tree so that it can be either captured or dealt with, and move to a more suitable location. So each time, our officers have responded to these scenes when we get timely notification. And we look for those signs, and we report those signs back to Department of Fish and Wildlife. We've also had lots of calls where people have just requested an update. I want to know what you're doing, what steps you're taking, and things like that. That occurred both as in 911 calls that have come through, or direct calls to the police department. But then we also have numerous reports and requests for information on Nextdoor, on the other social media aspects that we've been on. Fish and Wildlife's response, so they're going to get into the specifics later, but I did want to do some call-outs, that when we have a confirmed sighting or a possible sighting, we have called Fish and Wildlife to come out to the scene and be able to help us take a look. Quite honestly, I think I know what I'm looking for. Like many citizens on the island, I hopped on YouTube and Googled what I should be looking for. But they're really the experts, and they've actually taught me a lot. For example, the feces of a cougar gets buried. It doesn't need to be taken a picture of and sent to the police department. So that was something I learned through all of this as well. But we go to each one of these, we try to get Fish and Wildlife out if it's a confirmed sighting or a possible sighting. And as you can see here, we've got Fish and Wildlife that was out helping us look for the tracks or any presence of the cougar in those bright pictures. They are the expertise. They are also the people that have been interacting with our public as well, as direct questions go to them or through us as we get the questions. Outreach. So as I've stated before, we have utilized social media and broadcast media the best we can. We've been trying to educate the citizens as much as we can as we educate ourselves in all of this. We've also made requests that the citizens call us directly utilizing 911. They can call Fish and Wildlife as well, but we want to get those timely reports. We want to be able to get there with the fresh tracks so that we can provide that data to Fish and Wildlife, and that they can maybe respond and, you know, have a dog pack or whatever else needs to happen at that point. We have also created a Let's Talk page that's associated with our website, where we're able to answer direct questions from our citizens that isn't in a more private nature like Nextdoor, where everyone gets to see it. It's kind of the up-to-date spot. I wanted to give you guys a kind of an idea of the twenty-nine calls for service we've had. One of which was, they were sure that they chased a cougar up a tree, and we found a large raccoon in the tree. So, you know, we are going out, we are seeing what we can see, we are following through. And a lot of these, we've had basically an unconfirmed report. We couldn't find any other evidence when we thought we should see some evidence. That's not to say the cougar is not here, but what I'm saying is that there's no physical evidence that we're able to then track and provide that information to Fish and Wildlife.
So when you say no other evidence, that includes no evidence of any prey?
That's correct. To our knowledge, we have had no killings or carcass or anything like that located or reported to us. We've also had our officers take it upon themselves to go through the parks on their own, in teams of two, to see what they see and hear what they hear. And they've been unable to locate any signs of a fresh kill or any kill, let alone any cougar prints or noises that they would fall within the realm of wanting to bring Fish and Wildlife out.
Thank you.
What I'd like to do now is turn it over to Fish and Wildlife, who will get into much more specifics about their response to all of this, as well as educate us as to what cougars do and what cougars don't do. So Brian, let me queue up your slides.
Well, good evening, thanks for having us out. I'm Brian Kurtson, I'm the carnivore research scientist for the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. Kim and our enforcement officers asked me to come speak to you tonight, specifically because much of my research over the better part of twenty years has been focused on cougars, and specifically, cougars in this what we call the wildland urban landscape. So I had a decade-long research project located here in the Cascade Mountains, on western slopes around North Bend, Fall City, Duval, looking exactly at what cougars do when they get into residential areas, how frequently they interact with people, and the factors that contribute to those. And so what I'm going to do here is, I probably have too much information, as is often the case, and so I'm going to move through it pretty rapidly, give you a crash course and some of the basics of what cougars do and don't do, and then talk a little bit about how cougars behave around people, and hopefully distill some of the fear that people have related to these animals. So I think first and foremost, if someone was going to ask me very succinctly to describe what cougars are and are not, there's really sort of four things that characterize cougars. And that's, first and foremost, that's that they're solitary, they're secretive, they're highly adaptable, and they're far-ranging. The fact that they're highly adaptable and they're far-ranging, combined with the fact that they are the, oh, the second-largest cat in the Western Hemisphere, is basically why we find ourselves where we are tonight. It just naturally elicits sort of a fear response in people. Now, within the ecosystems that they reside, cougars are what we consider an apex predator. That is, they have impacts on deer and elk populations that in turn have impacts on habitat and the ecosystem as a whole. Now, cougars, first and foremost, as apex predators, they make their living looking for other animals to capture, kill, and consume. And by doing this, it's pretty physically impressive. They're, they kill the largest prey relative to any other cat in the world. So they're capable of killing prey that are five to six times larger than themselves. It's primarily deer and elk that makes up the bulk of cougar diet. But they're also opportunistic and highly adaptable. So they'll kill things as small as rodents and hares and rabbits, and as large as moose. And how often they do it tends a lot on the size of the animals that they're feeding on, as well as sort of the reproductive characteristics of the cat. Bigger cats kill bigger things, females with offspring tend to eat the most frequently. In terms of here in Washington State, so Washington State is home to an estimated cougar population of roughly thirty-five hundred to four thousand total animals. So that's from kittens on up to adult males. Sometimes you'll see a population estimate around two thousand. That's what we consider independent animals, or animals that are, can be legally hunted. Cougars are a game species here in Washington, so it is legal to hunt them from September first through April thirtieth with the appropriate license. And we manage them for a variety of reasons, some biological, some cultural, some more hunting-based. Give you an idea of just where cougars are found here in Washington, there's roughly one hundred and five thousand square kilometers of suitable cougar habitat in Washington. That's approximately forty thousand square miles. That's all of the areas in green. And really, what cougar habitat is, is it's places where there are things to eat and forests to provide cover. So you have that, those areas in green on this map really do sort of coincide with forest here in Washington State. Now, one of the most important things about cougars is their social organization. It, this isn't like the clubs they're part of and things like that. This is actually how they interact with one another. It dictates a lot of their behaviors, it dictates their distribution, and sort of how they use the landscape. And really, the takeaway here is that males are territorial, so they'll try to exclude all other males from an exclusive area. And they do that primarily for access to females. Females practice what we call mutual avoidance. They can overlap quite a bit, but they tend not to be in the same place at the same time. And females, because they're responsible for raising offspring, are driven primarily by the abundance and distribution of prey, mainly deer and elk. This gives you a little bit of an idea. So these are two home ranges belonging to adult males. The area should look relatively familiar to you. We are roughly, if I can hold it still, right in there someplace. The area in green is one male, the area in red is another. About a hundred and seventy-five square miles is the average male home range size. Now, you can see that females do it very differently. They're about sixty-five square miles, and again, pretty significant overlap about them. Now, there have been a number of questions about, you know, isn't Mercer Island unsuitable for cougars? And by and large, yes, it's far too small, it's far too urbanized. However, cougars are highly adaptable, and there's probably enough suitable habitat on the island and deer to support a cougar for a very short duration. Exactly how long that is, it's tough to say. It depends on how tolerant of people that that particular cat would be. But we wouldn't expect the cougar to spend any sort of significant time on the island. And again, if you look here, I mean, if you look at the size of Mercer Island relative to a single male's home range, it's really not large enough. Now, there have been isolated situations, pretty extraordinary situations. There's a cougar that resides within Griffith Park, within the greater Los Angeles metroplex. And Griffith Park is roughly the same size as Mercer Island. The big difference is there, there's not a freeway running through Griffith Park. There's not houses, it's actually a fair amount of open space. And again, that's the exception more than the rule.
I'm going to take just a quick pause. Lisa, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question, based on the picture that you could see from the surveillance camera. It's hard to get a relative scale or anything, but would you speculate as to whether the one that was sighted here is male or female?
It's almost certain that this is a subadult male. And I'll talk a little bit about why I suspect that to be the case. It can be difficult to determine sex and age based on pictures, unless it's an adult male, just because physically they're so much larger. But for the most part, some of the characteristics that cat has suggest it's male. But I'll talk a little bit about why I think that is. Transitioning a little bit, talking about sort of cougars in these wildland urban or residential environments, and why they're there. I think the first thing to point out is that it's relatively common that these animals spend at least some part of their life in residential areas. So, for example, I had studied sixty-nine different cats over that decade-long period as part of my research, and more than three-quarters of them spent some time in areas with residential development. And in fact, the average amount of time they spent in those residential areas was about sixteen percent. So it wasn't inconsequential. When they're in residential areas, they do modify their behavior. Cougars are active throughout the day, but when they get into an urban area or residential area, they become almost fully nocturnal. And they navigate sort of the matrix of houses and roads and people largely at night. They also transition from eating deer and elk and larger prey to eating things like coyotes, bobcats, possums, raccoons, smaller prey items. They're able to do that because they do it much more frequently, much more consistently. Here's just an idea of kind of what it looks like. So when I say that these animals use residential areas, the important thing to remember is that what they're really doing is they're using suitable habitat within a matrix of residential development. So each one of those yellow dots is a GPS relocation from a collared animal. In this case, this was an adult female. The development that you see largely in the upper left of the picture, that's Duval. And so that's a pretty good example. Here's a subadult male around Snoqualmie, and specifically the Snoqualmie Ridge development, again, using that suitable habitat in amongst the houses. Now, it's highly unlikely that you would see a cougar in person. And so oftentimes, we ask people in the police department here, we've tried to train them up as best we can to sort of identify the different factors or sign that cougars present with. First and foremost are tracks. The hard part about tracks is people aren't terribly good at identifying them, and particularly domestic dog tracks look very similar to cougar tracks. But the general characteristics that we're looking at here are basically three to four inches wide by three to four inches long. The heel pad, although it's not as easy to interpret here, is, there's sort of an M shape. There's two lobes on the top of the heel pad, three on the bottom. There's also the general shape to the track that's circular. And if you look at that compared to a domestic dog track, you can see kind of those key differences in terms of both the shape, as well as the heel pad. And then another key characteristic is, dog tracks will register the claws, whereas the cat tracks will not. There was a question earlier about how we found prey remains. Typically, this is the thing that people often misidentify as cougar, because cougars have a very specific behavior when they're feeding. That is, they cache their prey, that is, they bury it. And they do that to both reduce the rate of decomposition, they also do it to sort of hide the food from scavengers and things like that. The picture in the lower right is a deer that was actually in the ditch on a logging road, and there wasn't a lot of vegetation and debris to cover it with. But you can still see that the cat did what it could to kind of cover it up here. This is much more typical here. If you look closely, there's a deer leg sticking out here, and a deer leg sticking out there, and there's a hoof there. And if you were to uncover that whole thing, there's an actual whole deer laying there. And when cougars feed on their prey, they tend to be pretty surgical about it. It's not what we call messy, where there are legs over here and a rib cage over there. They can't synthesize their own vitamin- They can't synthesize their own vitamin A, so they eat the heart first, because that's where they get their vitamin A, then they eat the liver and the lungs, and then they'll proceed on to the muscle mass. This is a pretty unique type of sign that we see, and that's, this is actual territorial marking. I certainly would not expect to see this on, on Mercer Island. These are where home ranges overlap. These are mainly done by adult males to advertise to other adult males that the, the landscape in that area is occupied. And females come through to check from time to time. They will scrape as well, and, and males will check their scrapes to see if they're ready to breed. Now, another one of the questions that's come up quite a bit is questions about vocalizations and people thinking that they've heard a cougar and this and that. So i- in terms of the types of vocalizations that cougars have, it's primarily a series of chirps and whistles. It, it doesn't sound anything like what you think a cougar would sound like. They also obviously have a variety of hisses, snarls, and growls. Again, it's very, very difficult to mistake a cougar growl for something else. It's, it's a very deep guttural sound. They do also purr. I, I have seen that with, with kittens, I have not seen that with adults. Usually when I deal with adults, they're not in the best mood. They also do what's called caterwauling, and the caterwauling is what people most often mistake for a scream. Only females do it, and it's to advertise that they're ready to breed. In 20 years of studying cougars, I've only heard cats, a female caterwall, a handful of occasions. And to me, it doesn't sound anything like a scream as often is advertised or what you'll see online. I, I have seen some vocalizations in, you know, YouTube videos and things like that that maybe sound a little more human scream-like, but really, to me, it sounds like an alley cat on steroids is what it really sounds like. It's, it's a very distinct sound. Solitary cats really don't ever vocalize, and they certainly wouldn't vocalize if they were, if they didn't expect the presence of, of other cats. These animals, they're stalking predators, they, they tend to move through the landscape unseen, undetected, and as such, they don't spend a lot of time vocalizing like, say, a wolf would. So when we talk about, you know, cougars in residential areas, and I share stats with you about, you know, 16% of their time in amongst houses, and, and that 75% plus of animals do it, immediately that elicits, you know, some concern by people, you know, fear for their safety, fear for their property, that sort of thing. And so a lot of my research was looking at this phenomenon related to what we call cougar human interaction. And, and really, I think what you'll find is that the perception of risk actually exceeds the actual risk. There are, there are sort of four principal forms of cougar human interaction. The first one is a sighting, which we've talked a lot about tonight. Now, sightings are relatively common. They're also notoriously unreliable. My agency, and particularly our enforcement staff and our conflict staff can, could share all kinds of wonderful stories about the things that have been called in as cougars that have in fact were not cougars. I think my all-time favorite was a dairy cow in Enhamclaw, but that's a story that requires more time than what we have tonight. Sightings in and of themselves do not equate to a public safety risk. There's, there's, there's no data to suggest that just because a cougar is seen, that in fact that will lead to an attack on you as a person, your pets, or your animals, a-anything like that. I, I equate it to watching planes fly over your hair, you know, your head or your home, like, if you, if you have planes flying over your house, that doesn't necessarily mean one is going to crash on top of you. It's just simply you saw a plane fly over. Another type of, you know, cougar human interaction that's relatively uncommon, although they do happen, is an actual encounter. Encounters are different than sightings. Sightings is simply seeing a cougar, and the cougar may or may not respond to you. It's usually done at a distance. An encounter tends to be much more close. It also tends to elicit some sort of behavioral response in the, in the cougar. The picture that you're seeing there is what we would classify as an encounter. And again, very, very uncommon. Sometimes they can present a, a safety risk, but not always. Often, they're random, just sort of being in the wrong place at the wrong time, you bump into a cat, cat bumps into you. Think folks out hiking or someone living at the wildland urban interface in Duval is in their kitchen, and they just so happen to see a cat pop up on their back porch, the cat sees them, takes off. The, the one universal characteristic about all cats, whether you're talking about tabby cats on up to tigers, is curiosity. And that curiosity is often mistaken for aggression, or I'm being stalked, or, or something like that. And that's, that's not really the case. Another type of interaction that we frequently see is depredations, and those are actual killing of livestock or pets. They're relatively uncommon. It's probably the most common type of report that we respond to, but they're relatively uncommon based on how common livestock and pets are in the places close to where cougars live. So if you were to head to East King County here, go out to Duval, Carnation, Fall City, a, a good number of residents have goats, sheep, llamas, alpacas, these sorts of things, and the vast majority of people never have issues with a cougar. But occasionally, occasionally we, we do, then there's a variety of reasons for that and ways in which we deal with it. And of course, the most serious kind of interaction that we can have is an actual attack on people. Now, actual attacks on people are exceedingly rare. There have been 21 confirmed attacks on humans by cougars in Washington State since 1890. Two of those attacks have been fatal. There was one in 1924 in Okanagan County of a 13-year-old boy, and then, of course, a year and a half go roughly where the mountain biker was killed here in North Bend. Within North America itself, there's been 125 documented attacks on people. Now, of those, almost half have occurred on Vancouver Island. So there's something a little bit weird going on up there. I won't get in the weeds so much about that. But again, given how many people live in and near cougar habitat, how much time people spend recreating, the chance of an encounter is, is, is pretty low. And this is just a little bit of data from my own research. I talked a little bit about the unreliability of, of sightings and really reports in general. And of, of, you know, during my research period, only about 14% of the 120-some-odd reports that we got over a five-year period actually could be confirmed as a cougar. Now, that's, that is conservative, because some reports can be difficult to confirm. But basically, we had a number of observations of cats very, very close to houses, and in less than 1% of those cases, did we have an actual report or some form of conflict. And in fact, many of those are sightings, so you can't really, you know, equate them to conflict.
I'm just taking a quick pause. Benson, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. First of all, it's a fascinating study and report. You know, on the four things that you mentioned, I have a question regarding the, an actual encounter, if you happen just to stumble across and you chance meeting with a cougar. How should a person behave? What kind of reaction should there be?
Yeah, that's a great question. And unfortunately, I had a slide in here about that, but this is the wrong presentation. I'm not sure what's, why that's out there. But yeah, I can, I can quickly give it, you know, give you the rundown. If, in fact, you were to encounter a cougar, the most important thing to do first and foremost is do not run. Run means chase. You should face the cougar, make yourself as big as possible, yell, wave your arms. If you're able to throw things at the cougar, throw things at them. A subtle but important thing to do is to maintain eye contact. I mentioned earlier that cougars are a stalking predator, so they, they make their living being unseen, undetected by their prey and approaching them to a relatively close distance. By maintaining eye contact, you're actually relaying information to them that you, they are in fact being seen, being detected. And as such, it's, it's always a constant sort of cost-benefit analysis that's going on with them, and you want to swing the equation into the cost side as much of anything. Because they're a solitary hunter, they don't want to risk an injury. An injury means starving to death. And so by maintaining eye contact, it's just a subtle thing you can do. If you have children with you or pets, you want to make sure that they're close. Hopefully, if you have a, a dog or something like that, your dog is on leash. If your dog is barking, that's a good thing. Cougars don't like barking dogs. It's evolutionary baggage from living with wolves and being chased by wolf packs. If you have a child, you keep him close. If you can put them up high or on your shoulder, that's, that's important, too. If in the very unlikely situation you were actually attacked, you want to fight back aggressively. People that have been attacked by cougars and have fought back, by and large, have lived. Did they sustain injuries and sometimes significant injuries? Yeah, it's, it's a very large cat. I, I've got a 15-pound tabby cat at home, and if I cross him up the wrong way, I come out worse for wear. With that being said, again, it goes back to sort of that cost-benefit analysis and, and sort of keeping him, you know, reinforcing with them that in fact, you know, you are not prey.
Ryan, if I-
We'll take a quick break, yeah.
Yeah, if I, if I could interrupt, we have a hard stop at 7:30. I was hoping we could conclude quickly and get to Q and A. I think the council members probably have some questions.
Yeah, this is the last slide I have.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, this is the last slide I have. So in terms, you know, we've heard a lot from the public about people who are concerned about, you know, I can't, I can't go running anymore, what about my, my kids walking to school, what about my ability to ride a bike or garden, you know, and concerns about that. And, and I think for the most part, it's important to people, for people to recognize that they're, they are in fact very safe, and that they don't necessarily have to change their behavior. They should be aware of sort of their surroundings, they should be vigilant, and they should know what to do if they were in fact to encounter a cougar. I always recommend to people to, to carry bear spray with them if they like to trail run and mountain bike or hike outside. It's, it's, it's cheap, it's, it's very, very effective, it's non-lethal, and it's, it's pretty easy to find. It's basically what I carry for my work. I don't, I don't carry a firearm, I just, I just carry the pepper spray. And knock on wood, I've, in 20 years, I've, I've never had to use it. So it's a pretty straightforward way to deter a cougar if, if you, if they need to. So, yeah, that's, that's all I have for you here.
Brian, can you, can you, that was great information. Sorry, I'm talking to your back. Very specifically, our confirmed sightings go all the way back to the beginning of August. We are now in the first week of September, and one of the questions that I am commonly getting is, is the cougar still here? And how will we know if it's gone?
Yeah, so we've had considerable discussion internally. My thinking is that the cougar is gone and has been gone for some time. In my experience, when cougars get into very urban settings, like what I would characterize Mercer Island to be, they have a tendency to not stay long. I suspect that this cat probably came, you know, left the way it came, which most likely was it, it probably came from Cougar Mountain, down Coal Creek Parkway, to the, I believe it's the Newcastle Park right there on the lake. He probably swam the lake and then immediately turned, you know, after doing a walkabout on the island and, and sort of sizing it up as not really being what he's looking for, likely turned around and went back.
And would you say, you were saying subadult male, so that would mean that he doesn't really have his own range or territory, so he was kind of looking around?
Yeah, so like I said, unfortunately, something happened with my slides there where the, some, I'm not sure what happened there, but I did have quite a bit in there. So, yeah, so when cougars are about 18 months of age, they, they head out on their own to, to be independent. Both males and females do that, but males have a tendency to disperse very far, in some case, hundreds of miles. And they'll often cross, you know, inhospitable and, and, and sort of hostile terrain to get where they're going. And so in our experience, when we get cougars that sort of end up in unexpected places or places within a significant human footprint, a good example would be the cougar a few years ago that ended up in Discovery Park. There was a cougar on Vashon Island a few years ago. In all, there was also a cougar on Maristone Island out in Puget Sound. Those have all been subadult males. So, yeah, they, it's what we call transience. They're really not able to set up their own territory till they're about three years of age, because they're just not quite big enough to, to defend it from other males.
Okay. We do have just a few more minutes left, but first, I want to express my very sincere appreciation for you and all the work that your department has done. Clearly, we're a concerned community, and again, of course, thanks to our public safety team who's been partnering with you. Council, are there any additional questions? We've got about five minutes.
Mayor, just a quick one for me. Brian and Kim, I was looking through the police call log recently, and most of the calls we received really in the last two weeks are due to what is described as screeching noises. There's been great concern that that is a cat call. I paid attention to your presentation earlier. Sounds like that is unlikely to be a cougar. I think a few times we've responded and discovered it has actually been raccoons. Could you just confirm that I get an A on paying attention to the presentation? I understand that correctly?
Our, our-
Whoops, I think your mic's off.
Oh, how about that? Right after the first, our Carillion Bear Dog Team, Nick Yorg brought his dog over to Pioneer Park, went through, and if anybody is familiar with the hunting Boone and Crockett, it's a kind of a trophy thing for all kinds of game anyway. When he went through, the only thing he found, what he relayed to me, were two Boone and Crockett raccoons. And so very near the place where we heard, heard the noises and stuff. So, so yes. I have to say that one of the, the biggest issues with, with me as an enforcement, I have four officers in the entire county, all of King County, four of us. You are on an island here, just getting here sometimes, you know, somebody calls, I just can't get there to, to look at everything. One of the biggest obstacles that we, that we ran into from the get-go was that folks are reporting this on Facebook, on their social media, on Nextdoor, not getting it to Fish and Wildlife reports. I offered up my, my phone number, my email, I think I got 34. A lot of them came from the PD first, but if that message, you know, folks have that, get it to, get it to us, you know, I, I don't see the Facebook things, I don't see the Nextdoor reports and things, so-
And let me, and let me address that, too. We recognize that that was happening on our end as well, so PD made a change and directed that calls go through 911 so that in the event we actually did have a cougar, we had somebody on scene immediately. And I think that resolved some of the earlier issues we were having that first part of August.
And, and also, you know, everybody on Mercer Island has some kind of surveillance camera, don't they? I, I, I mean, answering the question, is that cat still here? If nobody personally sees it, somebody's got to see that thing on their, you would think-
Yeah, so, so some of those earlier examples, like the cat in Discovery Park in Seattle, the Vashon Island cat, the Maristone cat, areas that, I mean, with maybe the exception of Discovery, the Discovery Park. I mean, Vashon and, and Maristone are not anywhere near as densely populated. We were routinely getting photographs of the cat. We were routinely getting credible sightings. The Discovery Park cat was being seen roughly every other day. The Maristone cat, similar situation. Given, given that Mercer Island has, you know, 26,000 residents, so about 4,000 residents per square mile, and I can only imagine how many hundreds of surveillance cameras and people traveling the roads and recreating, I have a tough time thinking that if that cat were still here, we wouldn't get one photograph. Now, with that being said, I, I, I say improbable, not impossible. So it is entirely possible that the cat is still present, but I think it's, I think it's extremely unlikely. I think he really did just sort of do a walk-through on the island and then skidooed right off it.
Terrific. I think we do have some questions. We have Councilmember Bassett, we have Councilmember Wong, and then Deputy Mayor Nice.
No question, just a note of thanks, in particular for the very rich dataset you were showing us there in terms of range and locations. That was fascinating to see, and so thank you very much for sharing that with us.
You're welcome.
Benson?
Yeah, just by way of making sure we get as much information out to the public as possible. I know that there was, again, on Nextdoor, there was comments about, especially in light of what's happening or happened in Olympia, and the fact that Fish and Wildlife, they were setting up baits or whatever. The question really is, and it's, it's probably, it sounds like the cougar's probably gone, but the question is always, well, is there something we could have done proactive? Should we have set up traps or baits?
Without getting myself in a whole lot of trouble, I, my, my personal opinion on that is that that was not a very well-thought-out plan to begin with down in Olympia. That probably would not have happened here. Number one, where in the world are you going to set this trap? You know, that could sit there for a month and not have, and with some kind of stinky bait in it, you know, I, I don't know. bait in it, you know, I don't know. The ideal situation that we talked about was that if someone could get that cat in a tree, go stand underneath the tree, make lots of noise so the cat stays in the tree and call us, that's the ideal situation. From the get-go, we were not intending to go on a cougar hunt. It was basically wait and see and get that thing in a tree. Some of the officers said, "Well, I ain't going to stand underneath that tree, you know, there's a cougar in it." Well, that, you know, that's what we have to do. That would be the ideal situation, and that hadn't happened, so we're kind of back to square one here, so.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, trapping with them, it's pretty challenging to catch cats in traps. And the other technique, using dogs, this is an exceptionally difficult environment simply because of the myriad of private property owners, you know, trespassing issues and things like that. But it's also unsafe for the dogs themselves. The dogs are chasing the cat, they go where the scent goes or takes them. And so, areas with high-traffic roads and things like that, it's not a safe situation for them. It's probably not a real safe situation for the cat as well.
Brian, can I just chime in real quick? We did, and I want to make sure everyone has this information, the dogs were brought out on several different occasions, and were not able to pick up a scent. If they had, they would have attempted to track the cat, is that correct?
Yeah, the dogs are the most reliable tool we have. In the one case, Pioneer Park is big enough that you could probably get, if the cat was in there, the dogs would have been able to get on the scent and pop it up a tree without some of the issues that I just mentioned. But if that, typically with the dogs that we have, if the cougar had been present within the last six to eight hours, if the conditions are right, the dogs would have detected the cat and would have pursued it. The fact that the dogs were brought in and there was no indication that the cat was there, most likely the cat was in fact not there.
Okay, great. Saleem.
Thanks for coming tonight. We're all learning a lot, I'm sure. Question for you, Brian. In terms of cougar population in Western Washington and the counsel you gave out, are we seeing a growth in the population, and should we expect more of this type of behavior in the future? Or is this an anomaly and really the populations are stabilized?
Yeah, so, the first question, in Washington, we manage for stable populations, basically trying to harvest 12% to 16% of the population via recreational harvest. That should generate a stable population. And now, we don't always harvest that many in some places, some places we harvest more. By and large, cougar populations are pretty dynamic, they're also pretty difficult to sort of track over time. My impression is that cat populations are probably increasing in some places, decreasing in others, and stable, and they sort it out themselves. The one neat thing about cats is they do have sort of a self-limiting component to them. I mean, they are very much limited by the amount of space out there, the amount of prey, but the leading source of natural mortality for cougar populations is often cougars killing other cougars. It's that territorial component. As to your second question, as Western Washington and, you know, areas along the Cascade, foothills, Olympic Peninsula, as they become more urban, as they become more developed, as we see more people recreating outside in cougar habitat, as we see deer populations and elk populations become more urban, this is a phenomenon that's likely to continue, if not increase. I don't think that necessarily, it's a complicated mix of factors. My own research shows that the growth of the cougar population doesn't have much of a role. It's really driven more by people and human factors like expanding residential development. I could go on all evening, and I'll spare you. Here on Mercer Island, this is an exceedingly rare event. I would not expect this to happen again. One, there's a pretty good wall of urbanization between the kind of the heart of cougar habitat here in Western Washington and the island. And cats do swim, and this one most likely did, but a lot would come to a lake like Lake Washington and turn around and go the other way. I think that's why we haven't probably seen that before. I mean, we get cats in Redmond, we get cats in Bellevue sometimes. I had a cat walk down Bellred Road one time in the middle of the night. I just assumed he was looking at, you know, luxury vehicles or something. But...
I'm quite surprised that we haven't had, you haven't had, a bear. Because it's nothing for a bear to swim across there. And that whole east side over there is just loaded with bears. So, stand by for that one.
Yeah, bear's a completely different deal.
And that would be an easy fix.
Yeah, but in terms of a cat, I would be very, very surprised if you guys find yourselves in this situation again. But again, improbable, not impossible. Because every time I say something doesn't happen, it happens, and my expertise credibility diminished just a little bit more, and I can't have that. But, yeah, this is a pretty extraordinary deal. Granted, I recognize it causes a lot of concern and fear in the residents, and that's unfortunate. From a scientist's standpoint, it's pretty fascinating to see. I mean, again, this is a highly adaptable animal, and I think, you know, this type of thing is just a reflection of that.
Well, I think we all want to thank you tremendously. I mean, now, we're all going to be a little more worried about the bears, but apart... Yeah, well, that's right, they're no big deal. I think it's all relative to whether or not you're facing one in the woods or not. But with that, I think just a general thanks again to the public for all the interest and the passion. We recognize that tomorrow's the first day of school, and that dawn is coming later, and dusk is coming earlier, and those kids are walking to school, we have our pets, et cetera. So, from, I think, all of us, thank you for your effort and your diligence. And as much as this is fascinating, I hope we don't see you again anytime soon. And with that, I think we'll go ahead and take a five-minute break before we reconvene.
All right, Counsel, I think we're going to go ahead and get started. It's a little bit tough to beat the presentation that we just had. I mean, granted, I'm not at all pleased that we had cougar sightings somewhere around, but I have to say that was a truly, for me, fascinating half an hour, 45 minutes. But now that we have covered cougar, and hopefully, the community has a better sense of what has been done, what is being done, and recognizing tomorrow's first day of school, we're going to move on to special business. And special business this evening includes AB 5603, and it's the Mayor's Day of Concern for the Hungry and its proclamation, sorry, 244. So, for this, I'm going to welcome YFS Director Cindy Goodwin.
Good evening, Mayor Bertland, members of the council. Tonight's proclamation will be accepted by three individuals. Bob Kessler from St. Monica's Church. Bob, would you like to join us up here? Bridget Olson, the Promotions and Community Manager with New Seasons Market. Chinoa Philibom, Community Relations Officer with New Seasons Market. Thank you for coming up. In 2016, New Seasons selected Youth and Family Services as the hunger relief recipient for the donations that are made at the cash register. YFS is a group of beneficiaries of stores. The weekly gleaning of food provides food to Youth and Family Services from their store as well as other shelters. And with the help of St. Monica's Friends of the Needie, these two programs provide fresh dairy, produce, and a selection of deli items. And there are seven other organizations that are a part of that. So, each Monday morning, New Seasons sets aside food, and St. Monica's volunteers, coordinated by Bob Kessler, pick up the food and take it to these organizations. And Youth and Family Services on Mercer Island is the first one of those seven stops. The food plays an important role in putting together a healthy diet for people on the island who use the food pantry, in particular, people on a special diet or have medical concerns, and young children. Parents really love to get the food for their kids. They swell love foods, it really alleviates a lot of food insecurity on the island, and it makes our clients feel that the community is invested in them, and that goes a long way, and that's equally important as being fed, as feeling like your community takes care of you in some way. So, thank you all. Your work's very crucial for our healthy island. And Mayor Bertland.
Well, I'm going to hope that each of you will give us a few words at the end of this. I know I've seen the vans, and I'm trying to be super diligent about my bags so I get my beans at New Seasons, et cetera, but I think the public would very much like to hear a few words and a few words of encouragement at the end. So, whereas our King County cities recognize adequate nutrition as a basic goal for each citizen, and whereas no parent should have to send a child to school hungry, no baby should be without the comfort of the feedings needed for mental and physical growth, no elderly person's health should be jeopardized by lack of appropriate foods, and whereas 20.6% of Washington children live in food-insecure households for which the effects are associated with more psychosocial problems, more childhood illnesses, and poorer academic achievement, and whereas emergency and hot meal programs working with our cities, local churches, social services agencies, food banks, and hundreds of volunteers are striving day in and day out to stem the rising tide of hunger, but still need more help. Whereas we believe that when citizens who are not involved hear of these especially desperate needs of the hungry, as winter approaches and their low incomes much stretch to cover increasing fuel, electricity, and rental costs, leaving even less money for monthly food purchases, an outpouring of community assistance will follow. And whereas the emergency feeding program of Seattle and King County coordinates an annual food drive to help the efforts of their program and the area's food banks in fighting hunger, which will be held at grocery stores throughout King County on Saturday, September 21, 2019. And now, therefore, I, Mayor Debbie Bertland, do hereby proclaim, September 21, 2019, as the Mayor's Day of Concern for the Hungry, and strongly urge all citizens to join the emergency feeding program and our local food banks to nourish those who are hungry. Thank you so much for being here. We have a proclamation copy for each group, but again, would very much love to hear from each of you about how islanders can help your causes, so please.
Thank you, Mayor. I am very pleased to be here with New Seasons this morning, or this afternoon. New Seasons Market has been extremely generous in their donations to helping less fortunate brethren. St. Monica's Friends of the Needie basically does a pickup from New Seasons and Einstein's actually every day of the week, except Sunday. And also, we have a Tuesday night meal where we cook for 400. And these 400 exist in four shelters, and I brought two of our cooks with us this evening. I'd like to introduce them, if they would stand, Karen Zimmerman and Janel Honeycutt. It's very nice to have them with us and join us this evening. I'd like to share just two short stories with you about my experiences with Friends of the Needie, all thanks to New Seasons Market. The first one was, I got a call from Bridget Olson one day saying, "We have some prepared food in containers that wondered if you would be interested in finding a home for." And I said, "Yes, I'd be happy to do so." So, I picked up somewhere in the neighborhood of 100 to 150 of these containers, a little bit too large for Mercer Island Youth and Family Services, but normally, that'd be our first place. Anyway, picked them up and took them out to Peter's Place, which is on 901 Rainier Avenue. And I took them out of the cases and gave them to them, and then, as I was loading the empty cases back into the van, a tall, slender, bald-headed man, maybe 40 or 50 years old, came and said to me, "Sir," he said, "would you tell the people that gave you this food how much it means to us? Because you know, when you're hungry, you're desperate." And he said, "When you're desperate, you make bad decisions." So, he said, "Thank them for helping us to keep us on track." The second story has to do, again, with Bridget calling me one day and said, "We have a number of folding cushion chairs that we don't have use for. Would you be able..." Would you be able to find a place for them?" And I said, "Sure." So I took the chairs down to Francis House on 12th Avenue, where they help people at their first home or their first apartment, very low income, very limited resources, and most of them end up sitting on milk crates when they start. So to have a cushioned folding chair was like a lounge chair to them. So those are just two of the examples of the wonderful work that New Seasons does, and we're very fortunate to be a vehicle to help them. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chinoa. I work at New Seasons Market, and I work with Bridget, who didn't want to talk today. So I am the Senior Community Relations Manager at New Seasons, so I oversee the community programs and the philanthropy for the three regions that we're in. And I don't have a lot to say, but I do just want to thank you so much for bringing awareness to this and to thank the incredible people who do the volunteering and who do the work at Mercer Island Youth and Family Services. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you, everyone.
So just a quick question, because it's September 21st, is there something in particular that island residents can do? Will there be drop-off stations at New Seasons or other places? How can we get some energy behind September 21st?
On September 21st, there should be food rides at each of the two KFCs on the island, as well as New Seasons, and they will have small handouts, so that if you'd like to donate food, you can pick one up and go in and shop.
So mark September 21st on your calendars. Go grocery shopping. Go grocery shopping for more than just yourself. So with that, we do actually have a second item of special business this evening, which is AB 5604, Emergency Preparedness Month, proclamation number 245. And for that, we welcome Emergency Manager Jennifer Franklin.
Thank you very much, Mayor Burtland, and thank you, Council, for allowing me to be here. September is Emergency Preparedness Month, and with me tonight to go ahead and talk a little bit about this is Pat Hackett. And Pat, if you could come on up with me. And briefly, just about Pat Hackett, one of my fabulous emergency volunteers, which I can't do my job without. She's laughing. She's been with us for over five years. She is one of the leads for the Mercer Island radio operators, as well as heading up our Map Your Neighborhood program with Sue Roboy. So thank you very much for that, and she will be accepting the proclamation tonight. September is National Emergency Preparedness Month. Recognizing emergency preparedness each September helps remind our community to prepare for disasters, not just in September, but throughout the whole entire year. And this year, FEMA's theme is Prepared, Not Scared. And the City of Mercer Island has prepared several activities to help with this. The first one's coming up this Sunday, Farmers Market. Every year, we have an annual emergency preparedness booth that we go ahead and staff there with volunteers, and they will be there, Sue Roboy leading the charge on that one. And we'll show the residents what it looks like to go ahead and prepare for seven to 14 days, what the food items look like, how much water you need. So there's some great information this Sunday, if you can make it out there. September 9th, we start our CERT classes, which is a Community Emergency Response Team courses. And it's where we go ahead and get our citizens together to get prepared for disasters, but to be personally prepared as well. We currently have 30 people signed up. Usually when we have that, though, I would say about 20 show up, so I still have about eight spots left, if anybody wants to go ahead and sign up for those courses, starting on Monday. And September 26th, we will be having our annual emergency, I call it Emergency Preparedness Drill. And this drill will focus mainly on staff and some key volunteers that we're gonna be learning how to go ahead and run the emergency operations center in the instance that some of our key people that normally run it aren't there. So it'll be some great training. So again, the mission of Mercer Island's Emergency Preparedness Program is to prepare Mercer Island to be self-sufficient for seven to 14 days following a major disaster, especially when public safety and emergency medical services are most overwhelmed. The mission includes residents, businesses, schools, the faith community, and city staff. Devastating disasters, both nationally and internationally, as we're again seeing right now with the hurricane, are good reminders of the importance of preparation. Citizen volunteers may be the first ones in the community to respond after a disaster strikes, and that's why all these programs and our wonderful volunteers are so amazing to have. With some of us not living on the island, having these great volunteers prepared to go ahead and run the emergency operations center or take off and manage these teams is really terrific. So that being said, I will go ahead and let Mayor Burtland come up and talk a little bit, and Pat Hackett is here.
We're so glad that you're here tonight, and yeah, we'd love to hear a few words from you at the end. We're giving you the mic in all of Mercer Island. Okay. Whereas emergencies, both natural and, it says man-made, but I won't say human-made, can occur on Mercer Island at any time, and whereas the City of Mercer Island, neighborhood groups, businesses, and citizens can work together throughout the year to prepare, respond, and recover from these emergencies, and whereas the Emergency Preparedness Month, September 2019, provides an opportunity for citizens on Mercer Island to get prepared for these emergencies by making a plan, preparing a disaster kit, and taking a preparedness class. And whereas during Emergency Preparedness Month, September 2019, community members are invited to visit the Emergency Preparedness Booth at the Mercer Island Farmers Market on September 8th, sign up for the annual Community Emergency Response Team or CERT, starting on September 9th, and/or host a preparedness meeting for your neighborhood or business. And whereas Mercer Island community members and businesses who are prepared can encourage their neighbors by sharing their preparedness story with others, with the goal of having all Mercer Island community members prepared for seven to 14 days following a disaster. Now therefore I, Mayor Debbie Burtland, do hereby proclaim September 2019 as Emergency Preparedness Month, and encourage all Mercer Island residents and businesses to commit to being prepared for 17 to 14 days following a disaster by, so we have a list, a checklist, three items, creating an emergency plan, making a disaster kit, and taking an emergency preparedness course. So with that, we would love to hear a few comments. Thank you.
Well, I got into this whole thing after reading the article in the New Yorker magazine on the big one, which scared me to death. So I took a CERT course, and after that, became a ham radio operator, and then got to know Jennifer and do map your neighborhood events all over Mercer Island, which are fascinating. I mapped my neighborhood of 50 houses, and we have everybody, and the phone numbers, addresses, kids, pets, people who need special help, where the water shut-offs are, where the gas meters shut-offs are, and we feel like we're pretty prepared in our neighborhood. It's just been a privilege working with Jennifer. She is nothing but energy and enthusiasm, and I have so enjoyed it. And I will just leave you with one thing that I learned in my CERT class, which is winging it is not a preparedness plan.
So thank you to our guests for coming tonight. Next up on the agenda, we have the City Manager's Report, and for that, we welcome Interim City Manager Jesse Vaughn.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I appreciate all of you accommodating our schedule adjustments this evening. We had a couple of study sessions to get through on the front side, so thank you for your patience. Couple things here. The Youth and Family Services newsletter was mailed. I believe most of you received it sometime towards the end of last month. We did grab a couple facts from 2018 out of the newsletter that I wanted to share. In 2018, Youth and Family Services provided emergency assistance to 244 Mercer Island households. Our school mental health counselors, who are getting ready to start back up tomorrow, worked with over 1,000 students and provided 1,600 parent consultations. So pretty incredible numbers. Also, YFS conducted almost 1,200 counseling sessions in 2018. So I just wanted to take a moment, if you haven't read cover to cover on that newsletter, to share a couple of the highlights, and I recommend you take a minute to review it. Changing subjects entirely, as I mentioned earlier, our Public Works Director Jason Kittner had to leave unexpectedly today, so he is not able to join me this evening. I will talk about one of the Public Works projects and a recology update in just a minute. How many of you have been on East Mercer Way where we resurfaced the road? I was just down there last night. It looks amazing. So we began work in late June and completed paving in mid-July, just a little bit later than planned due to Mother Nature. I guess it was raining the first week in July, so it was a slight delay. We overlaid about 1.3 miles, pretty impressive projects, and there's still work going on out there, some minor utility work and a few other things that should be done by the end of September. All in, it looks like the construction cost will be about $730,000. Of course, we don't have our final bill yet, which is on budget. And the last time we resurfaced this area of the road was in 1992. So my compliments to the Public Works Department, as always. A road project like this is very complicated and interrupts our lives, but they did a nice job getting this done quickly. In other maintenance news, some of you have asked and probably noticed, our Parks Maintenance crews have been out working on the I-90 overpasses. We have a number of deciduous trees that did not make it, and we are in the process of removing them. I know people have been asking, you know, they're at ISO, when are they coming out? So they are slowly being removed now. What I want to tell you is, the trees that are being removed now are the deciduous trees. The decision to remove them was because they didn't leaf this year, so they didn't bud and leaf, so we knew that they were most likely not to recover, not going to recover. In many cases, and those of you that have been keeping an eye on the landscaping, you notice those trees have been struggling. The trees that came out have been declining for several years, and we've talked about this as part of our Aubrey Davis Master Plan. It's a couple reasons: soil conditions, drought, and just space, right? The root balls ran out of room. So looking ahead, I know tree removal is not our favorite subject, but Aubrey Davis Park Master Plan, and our next community meeting is September 23rd. Ryan's nodding in the audience, thank you, Ryan. We are actually going to be talking about plans to amend the soils, improve our soil conditions throughout Aubrey Davis Park, and what the plant and tree replacement will look like. So discussion coming, and if you have any questions about the landscape maintenance, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. Changing subjects again, that's the nature of the City Manager's Report. On August 20th, the City Council and the Planning Commission had a joint meeting. Sorry, there's a lot of text here. One of the items we were talking about was the Community Facility Zone, so I wanted to tell you where we are with that. The Council asked the Planning Commission to do a couple things, to review and determine if there was an alternative approach to the Community Facility Zone, specifically to look at some alternatives like a conditional use permit or a development agreement, and then to report back to the City Council. At that meeting, we didn't have a timeline developed yet, so I wanted to share that the Planning Commission will likely begin the review of these items in mid-October. They do have a couple of things ahead of this already on their agendas, and I anticipate a report back to the City Council sometime end of November, early December. So that is an update on the timeline. Recology, again, Jason's not here tonight, so I will give you the update. I don't have the details to necessarily answer questions on the spot, but we are a month away from implementing the city's new garbage contract with recology, and I should say I'm corrected often, it's garbage, recycling, and composting. Your welcome packets were mailed. Some of you have probably started receiving them, but they will be coming, they should hit your mailboxes this week. So in there, you'll have your account information, frequently asked questions, I know there's been a lot of them, information on service levels and rates. All this information is also loaded up onto the recology website. Some of you noticed, we already have the carts, they call them carts, we call them garbage cans, starting to be swapped out. So that will be ongoing throughout the month. You will receive an automated call from recology the day before, asking you to put your old carts out. So example, we had some residents who were called today, and they were asked to put their carts out for pickup tomorrow, and then recology will be getting slowly dropping off your new carts, although I was told to mention, they won't all happen at once, but it will be in a timely manner. So my understanding is the carts that are being picked up now are for people that are on monthly service, and the rest of us will be rolling out over the rest of this month. All right, lots of little text here, too. I apologize. Private road waivers first. We now are down to nine private roads that have been identified by recology as needing potential road waivers. Again, these are private facilities that there are some concerns about infrastructure and trucks, even the small trucks, whether or not they can service those areas. So this is still an ongoing conversation. I understand site visits are still happening. On our end, the city's end, the private road waiver, that's the agreement that these residents will be asked to sign, is still being reviewed. Our city attorney, Buapark, is actively involved in that process, and he's making sure that what's in the waiver aligns with what is in our agreement with recology. For those of you that are on a road, a private road, and you have concerns about service, I want to assure you that there won't be any service interruptions in October, while we continue to work with recology to finalize the private road waivers and get everything buttoned up in that regard. So even if your waivers aren't signed and site visits are still happening, service will not be interrupted. At the last council meeting, we had quite a robust discussion about modifying service, particularly compost bins, because we're going to weekly compost service, and some of you, for example, have two bins, and you will not need two bins on a weekly basis. So a couple updates. Recology will adjust your compost service levels through the month of September, and certainly thereafter, but you have an opportunity this month to make that adjustment so that you don't get more cans delivered than what you actually need. I've listed on this screen, you can go to the website, you can email them, or you can give them a call to make a service adjustment. And then, I know there's certainly been confusion about this. We had a lot of questions at the last council meeting, so I understand a follow-up letter will be mailed by recology around September 6th outlining this transition process. Again, please don't hesitate to reach out to city staff if we can help. Recology is out in the community, a couple places they will be if you'd like to talk to them in person, the Farmers Market, the 8th, September 8th, 15th, and 22nd. Also, the Doop and Daisies event that I'm gonna talk about in just a minute, at the Mercer Island Community Center on September 12th, midday. And then, recology will host an open house on September 25th at the Mercer Island Community and Event Center. All right, Jennifer Franklin, I already spoke about this, but I wanted to give it another plug. Anybody interested in taking the CERT class, begins on Monday, we still have some spots available, and Jennifer's contact information is listed there. And finally, I believe this is my last slide, I wanted to give a shout-out to the Parks and Recreation Department for an event that's coming up September 12th. Somebody over there is incredibly creative, it wasn't me when I was there. Doop and Daisies, a senior appreciation event. I can tell you, before I transitioned positions, we were working on a business planning, and one of the areas of focus, or refocus for the Parks and Rec Department, was on senior adults. And this is a really creative approach, so the idea was bring all So, the idea was bring all the senior service providers in for a midday gathering and to also showcase the Parks and Recreation senior services. I'm really excited to say that this event, all of the costs have been covered by sponsors, and they are listed here: Ages Living Aljoia, Covenant Living at the Shores, Island House Assisted Living, Recology, the Senior Foundation of Mercer Island, and the Sunrise Senior Living. So, September 12th, music activity speakers, and if you register in advance, a free lunch. Nice work, Parks and Rec Department. That is all I have for you this evening.
Great, thank you. So, the next item that we have on the agenda is appearances, and this is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the City Council on any item. Just a quick reminder that all remarks will be addressed to the Council as a whole and not to individual council members or staff members. And again, because we're in campaign season, the Council cannot accept comments on any campaign-related matters, elections for individual offices or ballot propositions, except under specific circumstances where consideration of a ballot measures on the Council agenda. So, hopefully, folks have signed up. If not, don't worry, it's not too late. But with that, we'll go ahead and start with the, the first set.
Mayor, I have two speakers signed up currently. We have Michelle Drovdahl and, and John Hanson.
Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Burton and the council members. I'm Michelle Drovdahl. I'm the Regional Manager for the Mercer Island Library, and with me is Kirsten Corning, the Library and Services Manager. We're here to brag, I mean, inform you about what's going on at the library. First, I want you to call it, I want to call attention to our statistics. Mercer Island is a very busy library. We checked out 352,195 items, and Mercer patrons downloaded 134,950 items. So, that's a total of 487,145 items for 2018. Mercer patrons also placed 136,976 holds, drawing in materials from all over the system. And we had over a million minutes of patron times on our computers. But of course, circulation and computer usage aren't the only things happening at the library, and Kirsten will tell you about some of our programs.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for letting us speak tonight about the Mercer Island Library. I wanted to talk to you about one of the many programs the library offers about, to support arts and culture. Last year, the Mercer Island Library partnered with the Mercer Island Arts Council to put on a series of three workshops: Stop Motion Animation, Get Creative 3D Pens, and Ukulele Startup Workshop. While all of these programs were successful, 3D Pens was especially memorable as patrons young and young in heart enjoyed making their own art pieces. The series was so successful that we are again partnering with the Mercer Island Arts Council this fall for three additional programs: IDEX, Ozo Evo Experience, The Gift of the Artist's Way, which encourages patrons to explore their creative side, and we finish up with Dreaming in America, Tales of Jewish Immigration presented by the Alchemist Theater.
So, as you can see, we have many programs, but most of all, we have wonderful staff who are willing and able to help you find the information you need. And then, there's me. I always want everyone to find a good book, so please ask me for a good book. Thank you for your time, and see you at the library.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hey. Good evening. I first have to say I've never anticipated learning so much about cougar habitat and habits, but I've been educated this evening. So, I came to this evening to speak in regards to the Sound Transit study, and recently been informed of some information about that study, and it's apparent to me that it's an effort to circumvent the plain language in the settlement agreement. The settlement agreement has the mechanisms in place to allow amendments and adjustments to what is within, and a unstructured and incomplete ad hoc agreement or study is not what's warranted here. It also gets worse in that some of the discourse between the city and Sound Transit on multiple occasions indicate that the city was actively helping in crafting the, what was being presented in the study as being in compliance with the agreement, despite the fact that in the same documentation, it's acknowledged that what is being proposed does not, in fact, comply with what was agreed to. The study has further served to create more confusion in the community and even within the city itself. There are now at least five different configurations referred to in the documentation. Only one is compliant with the agreement, and to this end, the proper course at this point is to follow the mechanism in, in the agreement and to modify the, to go forward and through the modification process. However, other action is also required to evaluate the proposal, which includes following SEPA, a process that is a legal duty of the city and cannot be waived. The provisions for that waiver in the settlement agreement are, in fact, null and void per case law, which I believe you now all have received the documentation to that effect as well. A formal SEPA will clarify the impacts to the community for proposed configurations. The conversations continue to suffer, even this evening during the study session, from a lack of details about what will be provided and by when, by who, and what are the impacts from safety and transportation and the rest of the community. This is what the purpose of the SEPA is for. Not entering the formal change process or using SEPA is not only illegal, it also is failing to act in interest of Mercer Island, and I strongly urge the Council to take action to follow what is laid out in the agreement and what is required by law. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Could you please provide your name?
Oh, sorry, John Hanlon, 7406, 7406, 92nd Place, Southeast.
Great, thank you. Do we have anyone else for public appearances? All right, hearing none, public appearances is now closed. The next item of business on the calendar, or sorry, on the agenda is a consent calendar. The consent calendar contains payables, payroll, minutes from August 20th in the regular, regular meeting, and August 28th, special meeting. AB 5599, public display of fireworks permit approval at a private residence. AB 5602, inter-local agreement for inmate housing with South Correctional Entity. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented? First and second in. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, consent calendar is approved. So, with that, we now move on to regular business, the first item of which is Agenda Bill 5605, the Second Quarter 2019 Financial Status Report, and 2019-2020 Budget Adjustments. So, for that, we welcome Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, Chip Quarter.
Good evening. I'm assuming you're going to want the short version, because you guys got such an early start. Is that a safe assumption?
Well, see, usually, we start this conversation about 11 o'clock at night.
I know, exactly.
Okay.
But I have compassion and reasonable perceptiveness. You started really early. How about if I just focus on the general fund, touch on REIT, and then move to budget adjustments? Big picture, when you look at the general fund, let's compare actuals for the first half of the year to the budget. Total revenues is at 49.7%. That actually is a little bit lower than I would expect. Normally, I'd expect about 52%, 53%. Why? It's really about development activity, as expressed in terms of general sales tax. Big chunk of that's construction sales tax. That's 48.5% of budget. I'll get into more detail in just, just a second. License permit zoning fees, 42.6% of budget. Utility taxes also is a little bit lower than expected. On development activity, and I'll show you some graphics here shortly, we expected, last time I chatted with you at the Year and Financial Status Report, that the first half of this year would be a little bit slower, and it would pick up in the second half of the year. And from talking to Evan and his staff, it still is looking that way, though things seem to be sliding a little bit. And so, we still expect, there's still a number of things in the hopper, but it's, stay tuned, and we'll know more come November timeframe. When you look at expenditures, we're at 48.3% of budget. That's a little bit lower than normal. It's really about contracted services. We have a number of plans that we're doing this year, that we're getting started on in the second half rather than the first half of this year. Let's look at first half actuals of this year to first half of last year. Total revenues are actually down 123,000 or 0.8%. That's mostly because of utility taxes are down 4.4% this year, and license permit and zoning fees are down 4.4% as well. Those are the primary drivers. Expenditures, they're flat. They're just up $32,000. That's 0.2%. That's a mixture of stuff, okay? And it includes service level reductions. Remember, when you adopted the 1920 budget, that included some service level reductions, so that's baked in. We also did some deficit spending reductions you adopted earlier this year that impacted 19 and 20. Position vacancies, which have been higher in the first half of this year versus the first half of last year. Then, we've had some, on the other side, significant vacation cashouts by employees that have retired or otherwise left the city. We lost a number of long-term employees. And higher-than-expected overtime in the fire department. Just that whole mixture of stuff, it's kind of complicated, leads to expenditures being flat. Let's look at sales tax. So, overall, that's down 1.7%. Yes, sir?
Can you speak into your mic, please?
All right. I'm on page nine of the Agenda Bill. And, tell me when you're...
Yep, I'm there.
So, on the first bullet, you know, salaries, you know, you list five items. I guess I had a question on clause five at the very end.
Sure.
How does that, why does that impact the amount, I guess? Is it because of overtime? I mean...
The position vacancies?
Yeah. Because it seemed, it seemed it would have reduced...
This is relative to budget, and so what it's saying is the, the positions, the costs, the personnel cost salaries are budgeted, but there's been more vacancies than normal, okay? And as a result, expenditures are lower than normal. And so, I'm actually getting to that here shortly, but it, it's, it's complicated what's going on. You have some things that are brought salaries up higher than normal, and some things that are pulling in the opposite direction, such as position vacancies. But I'll touch on it in just a second. Sales tax. So, overall, down 1.7%, 19 versus 18. Why? The drivers are the, the top two business sectors, which make up two-thirds of your total sales tax receipts. Construction, note that that's down seven and a half percent. Again, that's expected. Retail wholesale trade is up 5.4%, and that's out for the most part to that 1.7% decrease. Utility tax, a little concerning. This one, down 4.4%, as I mentioned earlier. Why? The things that are noted in red and bold, electric gas is down 5.5%. I usually can figure out why. I don't know why. Remember February, the big snowstorm, right? And so, that would have caused higher use of heating, right? But things did mellow out and become, we had kind of some warm days in April and May. So, I can't quite, usually, it's, it's primarily driven by weather and rate increases, but the rate increases were inconsequential, and so I'm not sure why it's down 5.1%.
It turns out that 20 inches of snow is a good insulator.
Yeah, there you go. I didn't think about that. Cable TV continues its decline, it's down 4%, and cellular, down almost 24%. That decline began back in 2009. Development activity. So, this is looking at, you can look at it in two ways. Permits issued, in terms of single-family residential permits, and all permits, including commercial, all right? So, the light, this is actually, it looks gray. It's actually a light green. That's the single-family residential. The darker olive is the all-building permit types. Bottom line, single-family residential is flats, down 0.8%. All building permit types are down almost 8%. Just look at the graph. That's the more, you can get something more out of that. 19, you know, we're still got a lot going on, bottom line. And so, 19, if, if, while it certainly, it's down from 18 and 17 and 16, it's, it's kind of similar to 14 in many regards. That's, it's normalizing, is all I'm trying to say, from, from, in terms of number of building permits issued. A better way to look at it, in my opinion, is valuation, and single-family residential is down almost 19%. All building permits are down about 12%. Again, first half of 19 compared to first half of 18. And again, you look from right to left, and 19 is very similar to 14. 14 was, was really picking up, okay? 14 is higher than normal year, and so what I see is just kind of a normalization towards typical building activity. But again, for the first half of the year, we expected this. We expect an upswing sometime in the second half of, of this year to the first quarter of next year. Expenditures by category, so we're talking to Benson. Salaries and wages, I look at this two different ways, and this presentation is focused on actual relative to budget. We're at 51% of budget. That's not typical. We're usually at 49-something percent of budget due to position vacancies. This is being driven by vacation cashouts, an unusual number of vacation cashouts from people that have left the city, and then also higher-than-expected overtime in the fire department, and I detailed this in your Agenda Bill. Couple people, there was a position vacancy, couple people out on FMLA leave, another one out on extended leave. We finally hired our fire marshal. That was being backfilled by battalion chief, who was the assistant fire marshal, and overtime. All that kind of netted out a little bit over budget. Things will normalize as we go through the second half of this year. Benefits, about where I would expect, 49 and a half percent of budget. Combination of medical premiums, what we budgeted is just a little bit, we budget a little bit higher than what they actually are for everyone except police and fire. This little tiny little bit of savings will be fully absorbed in the second half of this year because long-term care costs are higher than expected. Usually, budget for one person, we're going to have more than one person in the second half of this year that we're paying long-term care costs on. And then, finally, position vacancies also provides a reduction relative to that 50% budget threshold.
Chip, I'm going to take a, a quick chance here.
Sure, you bet.
Regarding the long-term care, we are paying that as we go at this point, correct?
What I do is I budget about $85-plus thousand a year to cover the cost for one person, whether we have one or not, and it's, it's happening again.
Okay, great, thank you. Sorry, Benson?
You know, on the number of cash out by, for eight employees, have those positions been filled, or are they continuing to be vacant?
It's a mixture.
Is it?
Some are, some aren't. For example, Francie Lake, Long-Term Deputy Finance Director, that position, while I've promoted someone, there's still an empty body, if you will, in the finance department.
And if I can add, Councilmember Wong, some of those positions are vacant by design while we evaluate the structure of the department or how the service is going to be delivered.
And then contractual services, that's the next biggest chunk of the general fund budget, 8% of the total. That's only at 25% of budget. It's because mostly these three plans, the ADA Transition Plan, the Parks Recreation Open Space or Prose Plan update, and the Organizational Efficiency Assessments, those are all getting going in the second half of this year. There wasn't any activity per se, any consequential activity in the first half of last year. Other things were occupying staff's attention.
So, when you, when you reference the first half of the year, that means through June, essentially, and I assume that the summer is more of a ramp-up phase, so we'll expect to see...
Yep.
...a lot of expenditure, disproportionate expense, or...
These things are... Yes.
And Chip, I can give the 30 seconds. The ADA Transition Plan is likely to be pushed out into 2020, just so you are aware of timing, and that has to do with staffing resources. I was one of the people that was supposed to be working on that plan. For example, the Prose Plan, we are in the process of selecting a consultant, so that will be starting soon, and organizational efficiency assessments are also underway with one of our first efforts being assigned to the Community Planning and Development Department.
Okay, thanks. Let's move, let me just mention one thing here, under other funds. Youth and Family Services, this is good news. Thrift shop sales are up 105,000, that's almost 13%. This is just evidence that the experiment, the staffing transition experiment, we're on phase three of that staffing transition, is working. The real measure is net income. That's up 92,000 or 20%. I, I will admit that that's been helped by some position vacancies in the thrift shop, okay? It should be a little bit less than that, but the bottom line is it's working out very well. REIT, we're at 50 and a half percent. It's right where I would expect it, is the bottom line to the first half of the year, even though actual revenue is down almost 8% or $158,000, and that's driven mostly by number of property sales. We expected a downturn. It's down 11%. So, we've had 211 sales in the first half of 19 versus 237 last year. Average sales price, this is consistent, you know, number of sales are going down, average price keeps going up. It's up 7.2% to 1.69 million. Holy cow, that's all I can say. Budget adjustments, we have two types. The ones you've previously approved but not formally adopted, and then a few new requests. I'm, I'm assuming that, here's, I just reproduced those that you've already approved. I was going to cut over to the new ones and just briefly explain those. The first two are fire-related. The EMS levy, the King County EMS levy, has a little, I won't call it a... The EMS levy, the King County EMS levy, has a little, I won't call it a grant, but it's like a grant, a little bit of funding called the BLS or Basic Life Support Core Services Program, that in this case, our fire department wants to use to replenish some EMS supplies and some ballistic helmets. And so that's on there, just shy of $21,000. They also received a $20,000 donation. It didn't have any specific strings attached to it. The fire chief wants to use that to help offset much higher-than-expected overtime in the department. And then finally, this is something...
I'm sorry.
Yes.
The source of that private donation, is it anonymous or...?
It's a private resident.
Wow, that's...
And they also gave a $20,000 donation to police.
And the person wants to remain anonymous?
I'm assuming so.
Okay.
Very generous.
Yes, very grateful for that. This next one is a correction. Remember all those deficit spending reductions the council approved? It was all focused on the general fund. How is it, you know, reduce budget expenditures in the general fund? Well, there's another side to that. And so here we're focusing on the IGS department. Remember, three of the things that you approved were eliminating the help desk technician position, reclassifying the IGS director to a manager position, and eliminating pay-for-performance? Well, all these folks are budgeted for mostly in the computer equipment fund. So this is an adjustment, you see their negatives in 19 and 20, to fix their budget in the computer equipment fund. So it now matches the IT rates between that fund and the general fund. So it's just fixing that oversight on my part. And with that, the item of business before the council is to adopt the budget amending ordinance. Questions?
Council, questions? Let's see, Saleem Lee in, and then Lisa?
Just a quick question on the fiber optic project that was going with the King County sewer line at the community center. I know we had some changeover in IT, and I know you're kind of heading up IT even though that's not something you probably want to be doing. Do you have an update on the expenditures on that project?
I do not. Normally, and I should have mentioned, normally I would include a full CIP overview. I just, I had to sacrifice it because I'm down a key person in my department. And so we were going to do a CIP update as a separate agenda bill rather than part of quarterly financial status report, and either November or December with the council.
That's fine, maybe then you can touch on it.
Absolutely.
And the other question is, given your staffing levels right now, in the investment income, investments, I know some was active and then some was with the state fund, have we moved everything to the state fund side now or...?
Yeah, it's, I have to let, our active investment, we're no longer an active investor. I've had, I've had to sacrifice that as well. And, and so we'll let those mature over the next, I forget, at least 12 to 18 months, and then we'll be eventually fully in the state pool.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Great, Benson?
Chip, I just have a, kind of a general question. I mean, other than the utility tax, which you highlighted as far as not quite sure, you know, why are we having a decline? Do you, have you seen any trend here? I mean, is everything that you see what you sort of expected?
Overall, yes. Other than development activity, I did expect it to, for the first half of the year, this is what Evan and I were expecting. And I'm just a little bit nervous about the second half of the year because I expected a significant uptick in the second half. And due to the timing, we're already in September, I'm wondering if that gets pushed a little bit into the first quarter of next year.
Okay, so other than that, you, I mean, which could be significant, I mean...
Yeah.
You have a, there's no, no unexpected surprises or you don't see anything on the horizon that...
Of any consequence? It's, it's really utility tax and electric gas utility tax. That, that's been flat to a little bit negative for quite some time.
Okay.
Because the rate increases we used to see, they don't happen. They're very, very modest.
I'm just concerned whether or not you think that there's something we should be aware of or be on the lookout.
On the revenue side, it's all about development activity. It's always the big question mark. That's always the most difficult to forecast. And expenditures, we control those, so for the most part.
Great, Dave?
Quick question about YFS, thrift store in particular. You, you mentioned, so we have, revenue is up, and you attributed that to the success of the experiment, but the net income is also up as due to vacancies. So wouldn't it, I mean, don't we want to start to tinker with, do we, do we have enough people on staff to sustain that, that new increased growth rate? Is there any thought process behind that?
It's, well, my thought process is, don't get in Suzanne's way in terms of running that shop. What I mean by that is, that's just a temporary phenomenon of having those vacancies, and she's been, you know, that's now the first half of the year. Those, to the best of my knowledge, are filled now. And so I'll be curious to see how the second half of the year goes.
Yeah, okay.
For me, when, you know, I've asked, as we do these experiments on staffing, what's the bottom line? It's net income ultimately. And yes, I'll be the first to admit, we have to adjust for that because we've had some vacancies, which had some expenditure savings, but the second half of the year will be telling.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's just you end up with two variables that end up with, right?
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Good, Saleem?
Just a quick follow-up on that. I had asked last time, we had a financial update from Director Goodwin, if she could send us the dashboards that the thrift shop produces for weekly, monthly sales. I never got them.
Oh.
Do you think that you could provide those to the full council? You know, to Dave's question, this stuff is being managed, we're just not seeing it. It's not transparent to us because we're not getting the information.
Suzanne has a whole bunch of very detailed information.
If you could try and find a way to get that to us this time, it'd be great to see that.
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead. I've got a question, and I think it's as much to Jesse and Evan, who unfortunately isn't here tonight. You know, we're talking about the decline in permitting activity. I think I'm, oh, I'm sorry. Whoosh. Um, I know. This is what happens when you keep a low profile. Well, good, Evan is here too. So we've got this decline in permitting, and I'm assuming it's, well, I'm looking at it, it's primarily residential. And as we all know, that staffing level actually follows the permit activity. Is this anything that, well, it sounds like, A, it wasn't anticipated, but B, I'm wondering at what point do staffing levels in the department start to change as a function of a lesser workload?
Great question. Yes, we are evaluating staffing levels. I looked at Evan because what I would like him to address is the fact that we do have pretty significant permit volume anticipated, if not at the end of this year, as Chip was alluding to, right into 2020. So we're monitoring. Evan, did you want to speak about your permit forecast?
And I know, I am so...
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm your community planning and development director. So we were anticipating a slower start to the year. If you break out the permit information, so to speak to permit forecasting for a moment, if you break out the permit information, if you look at our building permits, as Chip showed you a moment ago, our building permit and associated construction permits are down. Our land use applications, which often lead building permits, are actually up, significantly up. What's not clear to me is whether or not some of the changes that we just recently completed with residential development standards update, the town center update, critical areas code, et cetera, have artificially modified that land use application number or not. What we have in the foreseeable future is at least two town center development projects that we anticipate coming through, one of which is the city's project. We have a number of building permits that are kind of foreseeably in the hopper. There's, I believe, three subdivisions that are out there. One is the East Seattle subdivision, which I think the city council is aware of. We had a preliminary approval for the Pratt subdivision a few years ago. So we have building permits kind of in the hopper, if you will, that aren't reflected in our current permit data. Going to the expenditure side, to remind the city council, we had two and a half contract positions that were part of our budget. Both of those, both of those positions are, pardon me, all two and a half of those positions were not initially filled at the start of this year. So we have been kind of actively managing to keep our expenditures a little bit down. We have filled two of those positions, one at a lower rate than what we had originally forecast. The remaining halftime position is still unfilled. So we are actively monitoring it. I do anticipate a fairly significant workload for our department over time. On the flip side of non-permit-related work, we do seem to have increasingly legislative items on our plate, which some of our staff are being retasked to do.
Great, thanks. Council, if there's no more questions, I would entertain a motion.
I move to suspend the city council rules of procedure 6.3 requiring a second reading for an ordinance.
Counsel, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I move to adopt ordinance number 19-12, amending the 2019-2020 budget.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Terrific. Thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
Great. So we now move on to what is our second item of regular business this evening? Agenda Bill 5598, and it's the short-term parking project update. Welcome interim recreation director Zach Hovner, did I get that?
Yeah.
Okay.
An interim recreation manager.
Okay.
Counsel, maybe for...
Zach, is your mic on?
There we go. Now it is. Mayor and council members, I am Zach Hovner, your interim recreation manager. And today I am presenting the agenda bill for the update on the pilot projects in short-term parking. Let me get my PowerPoint going. To give you guys just a background, since the June 4th presentation that I gave to you on the short-term paid parking project, I introduced technology that could be utilized to implement, again, short-term paid parking within Town Center as well as the boat launch. Identified three specific sites, the BPRCo property, Sunset Highway Southeast cul-de-sac, and the boat launch using Sound Transit Settlement Funds. Initially, the project was to assess this technology for the short-term paid parking until construction commences on the commuter parking and mixed-use development. During that presentation, there was a motion to, or not a motion, but there was interest to include this in the boat launch as well, and I'm here to present that to you guys today. The slide up there is just to give another quick background of the parking application, what it would look like, and some of the features. The slide up here is just a sign that the vendor pay-by-phone typically will use and utilize to basically give citizens and residents alike information on how to pay for parking. Number one, they'd use the app on any mobile device. They can also access it through a browser of their choice. And thirdly, for users without smartphones, they can call the number and respond to the So I'll talk about the Mercer Island Boat Launch first. And again, this was initially, the technology could be utilized for the boat launch in reality, and with the developments that have happened since, it makes sense to implement the Mercer Island Boat Launch first. And I'll kind of give the reasons why here shortly. So currently, our Mercer Island Boat Launch has 60 parking stalls, 47 boat and trailer stalls, and 13 car stalls. It's owned by WashDOT per 1994 airspace lease agreement. The city does have access to it. It's highly utilized during the summer months for obviously boat launch, parking and launching as well. For 2019, the year-to-date revenue, just to give you guys some figures, we've sold, or we've had 2,500-plus transactions for the daily use fee. That's done by a fixed kiosk right now. It does have periodic interruptions. There is staff maintenance involved. The paper for the kiosks is rather expensive. And there is, again, there is some periodic downtime with that. 10% of the overall revenue of the boat launch does go to WashDOT. And then the annual passes, currently, we sell them out of the Mercer Island Community and Events Center, take staff time to print up the permits and whatnot, and that's a little over $8,000 year-to-date on that. So to implement this technology, it is staff's recommendation that we implement this, January 1st of 2020. Partly the reason being, our passes that we have currently sold expire at the end of the year, so it's December 31st. There's also some, our modem and data connection to that kiosk is up after this, after this year. So it makes sense to implement it the first of the year. The recommended rate structure, we are currently looking at that and will be just making sure that we're still on par over the general area of what we're charging for that. We do offer a daily use for $11, and our annual pass is 70. The table below that is the per-transaction charge, and just to remind you guys, that's how the vendor, the vendor actually gets their piece of the pie. There's one option where the consumer would pay a 25-cent fee on top of any rate. Or option two, the city would embed that in the cost of what we're selling, and it gets paid out of the revenue collected. There is, and you'll see it's highlighted there in red, that staff recommendation is for option two, partly due to higher uptake overall, pay-by-phone across the many cities and municipalities that they are currently in. They see a much higher uptake when there's not an additional fee involved in that. Again, for a pilot project such as this, it makes sense to get people, get the adoption rate up first. We can always change that later. But the option is, the staff recommendation is for the city to absorb that 20-cent, 20-cent fee per transaction.
I'm going to ask, just a quick break. We have Bruce and then Dave.
I'm sorry, I was unclear, I mean, clearly on your slide says recommended rate, but I thought you said this was the past rate and you weren't quite sure what your recommended rate was going to be. Can you clarify?
Yeah, so this is, so the $11 is the current daily use fee, and $70 is the current annual fee.
At the boat launch.
At the boat launch, sorry.
Yeah.
And like I said, we, we've looked in the past on what, what the going rate is around the Puget Sound region. I think we're still competitive, but before we go live on January 1st, we'll make sure that that's the case.
And, and when you say higher uptake, I'm, I'm just trying to understand what, what's really sort of transpiring in terms of a transaction with that? Because if I'm a boat owner driving up to the boat launch, is, when you say different uptake, are you, are you saying that that 20 cents might cause me to drive in there and go, hey, I don't think so, and drive someplace else in part? Because that feels a little unrealistic at that point, but I'm trying to understand what, what it is you're, you're actually wrestling with in terms of consumer behavior here.
Right. So pay-by-phone, they, their current, their mobile device right now, the application, it will show the user, hey, you're in parking lot 41950. It will then ask for the, the information from them if they have an account, or if not, they can be in guest mode. If we have a recommended rate of $11 for the daily use fee, and the city absorbs that fee, they hit that button and the transaction occurs after they put in their debit card or credit card or something like that. For the option number one with the 25 cents, it will show $11 and then plus 25-cent transaction fee. And again, this is per pay-by-phone, they just see a higher uptake when it doesn't show the additional 25 cents.
It's like when you, we were talking about this today, it's, it's like when you take money out of a cash machine, and you're taking $20 out, and it says, there's going to be a $3 convenience fee for this. So the question is, do you, you embed this in the fee and nobody sees it? Or do we, do we add it on and it, it shows on the receipt in that way? Does that make sense?
Forgive me, I know, you've got a question. Let me, so if the rate were 1125 and we didn't show a separate fee, are you saying that the uptake would be higher because they wouldn't see it as a separate fee?
Potentially, yes. Our recommendation, and I want to be clear, is to embed the fee, not show it as a service fee on the receipt. You have, well, I should say, in this case, the Parks and Recreation Department, as Zach has noted, will be evaluating this fee and determining whether or not it should be increased in 2020. And I've asked them to factor in the additional cost of the service when they set the 2020 fee.
Good, Dave?
Yeah, so I was a little bit with Bruce there that, I mean, I get sensitivity analysis in consumer behavior, but I think his point is a good one, where it's a captive audience. My option for launching my boat is onerous and certainly worth 25 cents, so, you know, just in a time where literally, in this case, every penny counts would, or just to think about that. The other question that I don't quite get, are we eliminating the annual pass now?
We are not. We are not. So there's the option within the app to pay for the annual pass. We don't know if that's going to be... So Pay by Phone is currently reworking their, it's called permitting on their side. That's the term that they use. They have that option. They're not getting rid of it. But they don't know if that's going to be available in the next couple of months. It should be, it should be hopefully live by January first. If not, the Parks and Rec Department will make sure that those annual passes will be sold at the community center still.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Saleem?
Is there, has there been any discussion about rates for island residents versus non-island residents? And is that allowed under the WashDOT revenue sharing?
I don't know that specifically. I can get back to you on that.
That'd be great. On the WashDOT, is it a revenue sharing or is it a net profit sharing? Or how do they get their ten percent, just off gross receipts?
Correct.
So if we add twenty-five cents as a fee, do they take ten percent of that too?
It is gross receipts, so whatever we collect, they get ten percent of that.
But do we collect it, or do we, does the vendor collect it?
That's a good question. Under option two, let me take that back. So under both options, they will get that money per the transaction fee, so we wouldn't be seeing that. I believe that the WashDOT would get the remaining monies left after the transaction fees of what the city actually collects, but I'll make sure.
Yeah, just don't shortchange us.
Right.
Deputy Mayor, I do have an answer to your question. We are not able to charge residential and non-residential rates for the boat launch per our agreement with WashDOT. I got some audience assistance with that.
There you go.
One fee.
I was just going to make a comment too about the boat launch. My sense is that when you look at the price sensitivity, and again, I'm going to emphasize I'm guessing here, but the experience is largely going to be from people who are parking for an hour, two hours, three hours, four hours. And it's a, you know, it's a standard parking scenario as opposed to when you put your boat in the water, I'm going to look at the boater half of the council here. I'm guessing you're gone for a couple of hours and it's, you know, at least a half-day commitment. So the price sensitivity and the turnover is probably not as great a factor, I'm thinking. It will be interesting to me when we move on to this conversation, perhaps more so than it was with regard to the boat launch itself.
And Mayor Berlin, the Pay by Phone application, they have the ability to charge by half-day rates and full-day rates, and if we were to change it to hourly rates. So that's something that we could look at moving forward. But the daily use fee right now, in my opinion, it works well. There's no option to the boater unless they want to do the annual pass, where they just need to make that determination prior.
Okay.
Okay, so moving to the BPRCO and Sunset Highway Southeast, which is that cul-de-sac and highlighted in the red outline on the screen. Again, there's eighteen stalls currently at the BPRCO site, ten roughly at the Sunset Highway Southeast cul-de-sac, depending on how people park there. And since the June four city council meeting that I presented to you on, staff identified that permit requirements for this particular site, the BPRCO property, permitting costs that are basically required per our city code has increased the rates that I gave you, the estimated cost, by about seventy-five-hundred dollars. I'll go into detail on the next slide about why that is, and the time needed for implementation by roughly about three months. And then staff, we're seeking direction from the council today on whether to pursue the implementation on the BPRCO and Sunset Highway Southeast projects in this pilot project. So the BPRCO property, under our current city code, does not allow the city to change the use of the property. It is zone TC five and as Tully's was the previous occupant as restaurant. And we cannot change that to a paid parking lot per our city code. I was not aware of this requirement before I talked to you guys on June fourth, but the proposed change of use to a paid parking lot will however meet the conditions of a conditional use permit or a CUP. You'll see up on the screen that the base fee of that is roughly seven thousand dollars, and it is required within our current city code to, if we were to move forward with this project at the BPRCO site, to change that use from restaurant to paid parking lot. And again, the roughly three months to process that permit is also included there.
Just want, you know, as far as that three-month processing time, there's no way to expedite this process? Is there a waiver? Is there a... I'm just... Oh, okay. Well, I think I'm going to get my explanation.
Councilmember Wong, of course, my name is Evan Maxim, the community planning and development director. The conditional use permit process, as a reminder to the city council, requires both a notice of application, which has a thirty-day comment period, and a notice of public hearing, which has an additional thirty-day comment period. We would expect the hearing examiner to issue a decision approximately ten days after the public hearing. And then there's a fourteen-day appeal period at the end. So three months is effectively the fastest this conditional use permit could be issued.
Can I just offer as well a reminder? We use this parking lot for the Christmas tree sales in November and December. So it would have been down during a period of time anyway. So aiming for first-quarter implementation seemed like an okay situation for me.
Saleem?
Evan, can you remind me on New Seasons, when we did the temporary parking for commuters, did we go through the CUP process for that, or is that not required?
Deputy Mayor, I actually don't know. That predated my arrival at the city. The requirement here is coming out of your town center code, which I believe was amended in 2015. The New Seasons exercise, I believe, was right in that same time period. So it's possible that you were vested to the previous code. And I just couldn't speak to whether that was a requirement at that time.
Okay. And then quick follow-up on the seven thousand, is that fee?
That fee is a...
What happens to that? I mean, we're paying ourselves, so...
It's a transfer from the Parks Department to the Community Planning and Development Department, and it's essentially covering the staff time to process the actual review.
Just to chime in real quick, so if this were to be the case, it'd be Sound Transit Settlement Funds to pay for the CUP.
Deputy Mayor, I did do a search of CUPs and was unable to find one for the New Seasons. But like Director Maxim said, I think it's because of that code switch at that time.
Bruce?
I don't know if it's the crux thing, but this says paid parking. The New Seasons parking was not paid parking either. So it may be that it doesn't fall under this category for that reason.
So Sunset Highway Southeast cul-de-sac is also one of the other sites that we've talked about due to the proximity to BPRCO property. The current designation is time-limited parking, restricted to four hours, with signs being posted right now of eight-thirty a.m. to five-thirty p.m., except for Sundays and holidays. Again, this spot can house or can park ten-ish cars, depending on how people park. An ordinance change would be required to modify the Sunset Highway Southeast cul-de-sac to paid parking. It's up to council to determine that ordinance and the maximum allowed time. And then for this site, there it would be a right-of-way permit required to install signage that I showed you in this second slide, that people would be able to utilize for that lot.
Saleem?
Was there any discussion about the other cul-de-sac on the west side of Sunset Highway?
Not in my time of, on this project. We haven't talked about that.
So from a permitting perspective and CUP conversion, you know, is there any advantage to just doing both these street ends? Is it cheaper? You have to pay double?
Or arguably the whole street even?
There likely is a savings in terms of the permitting. One thing that I would be a little bit cautious around on the westerly cul-de-sac is ensuring that we have adequate fire turnaround, fire access. On this eastern extension, we have the Tully site, which has adequate frontage on both sides, in my experience, not the fire marshal, of course. At that westerly end, I believe it's surrounded by buildings on, at least the west, the Aljoya property. And thinking to the south there, I think there's parking. So there may be some technical challenges with that location.
The CUP is specific to the Tully's parking lot?
It is.
Not the cul-de-sac?
The difference here would be that we're looking at creating a new use, if you will, on the Tully site, off-site, or pardon me, off-street parking that's not associated with an onsite use, as opposed to the existing parking that's allowed along sections of this Sunset Highway already.
Lisa?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions when we get to the estimated project costs. But for right now, my question is more along the line, more in the cul-de-sac parking. Are people complying with the four-hour limit? Do we have any indication? I mean, is this truly parking that is used for, by people who are going to merchants? Or are people just taking their chances and using it as de facto commuter parking?
So yeah, we have, our police support officer does active parking enforcement in the town center to include this area here. So I forget off the top of my head how many citations she writes each year, but it's in the hundreds. So she does cite, I don't know how often it's a problem there, but she is active there. So past experience would indicate that once people understand there's enforcement, active enforcement in an area, that it does modify behavior. I just don't have that statistic with me right now.
Okay, good. Thanks.
And just to touch on that point real quick, the Sunset Highway Southeast cul-de-sac, our police department enforces that right now. The BPRCO property wouldn't need to be managed by a third-party enforcement company while it's still in private ownership.
Lisa, do you have a question?
Well, I'm just wondering, are we going to get to, there's the non-recurring costs, it's the one-time costs, and then there's the reoccurring costs. And, but I'm wondering if we're getting to any sort of revenue projection?
We will. So the recommended rates for the BPRCO and Sunset Highway Southeast properties is in this table. This was given to us by a third-party estimate based on factors in Seattle, Bellevue, Eastside cities that they typically use for hourly parking. The, again, the per-transaction table is highlighted on the lower part of your slide there. Again, this is up to city council if option one or option two is utilized. But it is staff's recommendation to utilize option two and just embed that cost. One-time costs would be to restripe the BPRCO parking lot. If you guys are aware of that site, the lines in the parking lot would not change. We would just restripe those lines, but they're pretty faded right now. The signage and labor for installation would be to purchase the signs for the, for the each individual property and install those. And then the mobile payment services setup is actually the merchant account, basically setting up a gateway from when people purchase and have a transaction occur through the application, then get that money deposited within the city account. And then the permit costs, as I talked about, were the roughly seven thousand dollars for the conditional use permit for the BPRCO property, and then the right-of-way permit for Sunset Highway Southeast. There's no permit requirements for the boat launch.
So Saleem and Benson?
So to add the second cul-de-sac, do you have to add another four-hundred-dollar right-of-way permit? And does that take three months like the CUP?
The right-of-way permit does not take three months like the CUP. If you add it all as one package now, it would not be an additional permit cost. It would just change the scope of the review for the single permit. If you add it at a later date, we would treat it as a separate review.
Okay. And then your comment about fire trucks having enough room to operate at that cul-de-sac, it's currently fully parked all the time.
And so Deputy Mayor, I'm not disputing that it could be fully parked. It's just an item that we have not looked into, to the best of my knowledge.
Benson?
Zach, I'm sorry. Can you go back to your, the review, I mean, the recommended rates? So those are just, again, hourly rates. I mean, have you projected the kind of revenue that you might receive? Is that on another slide?
Yeah, we have an estimated revenue. No worries. And so just to get there real quick, so our ongoing costs on a monthly basis would be the enforcement by a third-party for the BPRCO property. Again, the Mercer Island Police currently enforce the boat launch and Sunset Highway Southeast currently. The two-hundred-and-fifty dollars on a monthly minimum is how the vendor gets their piece of the pie. This is taken out of those option one or option two transaction rates. The credit card authorization charge is just typical based on the Visa and MasterCard company authorization. So our total ongoing costs roughly is seventeen fifty a month. And so our estimated revenue, what I have highlighted here at the bottom there is, again, from our third-party. They have, what they've seen in other municipalities is, obviously, the first month that we would go live is on the lower spectrum. As people start adopting this, our community outreach would be implemented before this goes live. But, you know, the use would be slowly ramping up towards the later part of our pilot project study. Again, the two-thousand to four-thousand-dollar monthly revenue, that is for the BPRCO and Sunset Highway Southeast property sites only. I would assume that with launching this at the boat, launching this at the boat launch, with implementing this at the boat launch, we would see similar figures in our revenue for daily use and annual passes. So next steps, if council is interested in pursuing this pilot parking project, it would be, number one, is to confirm your desire and direction to move forward with the implementation of the paid parking application at the boat launch with a go-live date of January first. And two, provide staff direction on the pilot parking project at the BPRCO site. I should have hit on the, in our staff's recommendation is if the BPRCO site, if council would like to apply for the conditional use permit, the Sunset Highway Southeast cul-de-sac goes with that. I don't think at this time it would make sense if we were not to move forward with the conditional use permit, that Sunset Highway Southeast and the boat launch would be separate.
Okay. Saleem and Dave?
So Park and Rec is the sponsoring organization of the project. They pay the fees. Does the revenue then flow back to Park and Rec from, is that where this is going to end up?
At the boat launch specifically, it does go into Parks and Recreation line item. For the BPRCO and Sunset Highway Southeast, I would look to Jesse to make sure.
Actually, Deputy Mayor, I have that question written down, I believe you asked last week, and I'm still waiting to confirm what the agreement was in terms of revenues associated with this project. So I don't have an answer for you tonight.
And then, so clearly the CUP, if it's privately enforced, any ticket revenues would flow to the sponsoring organizations of Park and Rec, or whomever it is, let's just say. And then if it was a street ticket, those parking ticket revenues go where? So a cul-de-sac parking ticket, who gets that revenue?
I'll have to, sorry, Chief, I'd have to point to you on this one.
Yeah, so, I mean...
When you say parking ticket, do you mean the cost of the parking? Or do you mean...
For enforcement. So the city gets a portion of that. The county gets some of that. The city gets a portion of that as well. We also pay NORCOM if we call out on an activity. If she's going to do active parking enforcement in an area she calls out, there is a sort of a transaction fee with NORCOM, so they track where she's at with that. But it goes in general fund. The court gets some of that money. So I don't know how this would look different. It'd be a matter of deciding how that gets divvied up in the city when we take those receipts.
David?
Yep. So there's so many questions before mine. I think I forgot some of them. I guess one is a question for the council, one is maybe a question for Jesse. Jesse, for you first, whoa, I realize it is absolutely a crystal ball question. What would you anticipate the operational duration of BPRCO site to be? Am I allowed to ask that or not?
You're not allowed. No, at this point, I don't have an answer, to be honest with you. I think we're safely into 2021 before we'd be under construction. And that's just based on where we are today. So before our developer, Main Street, can even start designing, we have to be underway with a development agreement. And that's anticipated to begin at the end of this year, early 2020. So it takes more than, conceivably more than twelve months to design and permit a project like that. We get into 2021, so we're looking at probably a minimum a year of pilot parking project operation.
So just trying to net it out, because the seventeen thousand is not really true because most of that we pay to ourselves. So it looks like about fifty-one hundred dollars in one-time setup cost, but that covers all parking lots. And then you're saying four thousand dollars a month for a year minimum. So that tends to pencil out. The second question is a little odd, but what if we didn't pay for enforcement? That's more of a, I guess, a council question, or maybe for you, Jesse. What if we, what if we didn't opt for private enforcement? What if we, what if we didn't opt for private enforcement? Say it on TV like I am right now.
Right, I think we're advertising right now for--
Please park at the BPRCO.
I don't, I don't have an answer tonight. I would have concerns about--
Nefarious activities.
Exactly.
Wendy?
So, what if we just did a pilot on the cul-de-sac and not BPRCO initially? Like, you don't recommend that because the scale isn't there, the cost isn't there. Can you just talk me through why we have to do both and not one or the other, given the uncertainty with the site and the math that David's talking about?
Yeah, and you're accurate, I mean, it is council's decision if that was the case. I think it was just a, if we are to include as many lots as possible, so the three lots, we, we would eat away at that $250 monthly minimum for the transaction. Obviously, the BPRCO site with 18 stalls and most likely high turnover would, would be a high driver of providing that transaction charge. Again, it's completely up to council if that's the pilot project direction.
Follow-up question then, so how many spots do you anticipate going further down that street on the other end of the cul-de-sac that Saleem was talking about? Do we get another 10 or 20 spots, or?
I, again, I haven't, I haven't looked at the, the east end of that, of Sunset Highway Southeast. It's just been the eastern, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna take a turn, then I have Saleem, and I see Lisa also reaching. So, yeah, just so you know, point one, I'm good with confirming direction, et cetera, et cetera. To me, you know, I think I need to see this whole money flow laid out in more detail, because initially, there's some degree of funds that can come from Sound Transit Settlement Agreement. I think it says up to $72,000, but we also know that those funds are interchangeable, et cetera. So, does that actually put any strings on it? Second, where would the money come back? Would it come back as our police chief has outlined, which means a certain portion of it goes into the court system and/or other places, and not into city coffers? So, which city coffers could we direct the most money? And then I think the third point that we've been batting around a little bit is, in my mind, if we're gonna look at that cul-de-sac, I would be interested in understanding the entirety of Sunset Way. So, not just the two ends even, but there is some limited duration, I think two-hour parking, that parallels, that is, it's parallel parking on Sunset, but I'm not sure. So, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it. And then I think the final question that I would ask to staff is, we've referenced the fact that in the future, we might go to parking fees in our town center. Is this a viable pilot for finding a vendor and/or best practices and/or community sentiment for fee-based parking in our town center? So, if we're gonna do this, I'd like to make sure that at least we're pretty clear on what our short, medium, and potential long-term goals are. So, I, I'm not ready to give too much feedback on two, other than I think we need more work, but I need to see how the money tracks. So, with that, then we have Saleem and Lisa.
So, I'm gonna largely agree with Debbie on that and echo Wendy. You know, I, I think that looking at the entirety of Sunset Highway in terms of what can and can't be done there, something that would make a more sensible pilot project to me. I'm, I'm not sold on Tully's, these numbers panning out as they are. To me, it looks like as much effort that goes into it, you won't get, you'll get that same amount of revenue out, maybe, if you're lucky, and it won't be replicated elsewhere. We're not gonna go buy another site and then do a conditional use. So, it's really not a pilot for anything else, it's just a way to cut our losses. And to me, I think we're gonna equal our losses, so generally think, I appreciate the work, but it's probably a day late and a dollar short.
Lisa, then Benson?
Thanks, thanks Zach for this presentation. Yeah, I think I'm a go on the boat launch, for sure, but I have similar concerns and to the whole Sunset Highway and the BPRCO property. It seems like there's a lot to be invested with a little return. I'm also really reluctant to take away what is essentially short-term parking for merchants. I'm real sensitive to the difficulty of parking in the city. I'm sensitive to the difficulty of trying to, you know, get a leisurely dinner with friends in under two hours without running afoul. If this is a four-hour parking spot and it's reasonably adjacent to some restaurants, which, which it is, then I, I'm kind of in favor of preserving that right now until we see how other options play out.
Okay, Benson?
Yeah, I guess I will support item number one, confirming the boat launch. But, you know, again, echoing some of my fellow council members, I have concerns about number two, and I definitely agree with the mayor. I, you know, I was just trying to do the math, and I really would like to see the, everything consolidated so I can see it at one point and get an idea of what the projected incomes might be. But, seems to me that it's gonna take a while to cover those costs. And I guess, you know, if we're gonna come back, or if you're gonna come back, or if the council wants you to come back with more information about Tully, BPRCO site, I guess I would also wanna know if we decide not to do this pilot program with that site, what is the game plan? I mean, is it gonna just be left to anybody who gets there first? Or what is an alternative way to manage that property? So, I guess I'd like to have that response by the staff as well.
I can probably speak to that now. At this point, it would likely remain status quo, council member wrong. Our police department does not currently have authority to enforce parking or otherwise on that property. So, it's working okay. We often do have people parking there long-term and overnight. Or we could close the parking lot, which, to council member Andrew's point, it is being used in a legitimate way for people that are going to Mercer Island businesses.
So, basically, whoever gets there first just parks there, I mean, that's really what it is.
Yeah, you are correct, you're correct. If I, oh, go ahead.
We've got a number of, at some point, you'll have to sort of collate all these inputs, but my, thank you for the presentation first. So, my reactions, you know, go ahead and embed the cost, but be sensitive, or be paying attention to the price sensitivity and figure out where the--
Are you talking boat launch, or you?
I'm talking about both of them now. Yes to the boat launch, it seems like a no-brainer to go forward with that. Yes to the idea that it would be nice to have a more complete picture of what the cost and revenue is over time, which has been suggested by a couple folks. But my gut tells me that I would be inclined to support going forward with both Tully's and the east end of Sunset. The reason being that I think there's, I think there's an opportunity here for us to both learn a lot about pricing of parking and how it is going to play in our community, and for our public to get a chance to play with pricing of parking, which both, boat launch itself is a, is a very different and unique user group, whereas town center is, is much more average man. And so, I think having a pilot project there is, is worth doing. I do think, if I recall correctly, the east end of Sunset is four-hour limit, and we set four-hour limit with purposeful intent that we wanted something that wasn't all day, but was long enough for you to take a bus into the city and run some errands and come back. And it was a bit unique in having that, that less than all day, but longer than a couple hours limit to it. And I would personally, unless there was some compelling information that said we ought to change that, I'd say keep that. So, yes, you could charge, you know, in the, in the way that the app allows you to, or you can extend it, but I'd still cap it at four hours unless we had a compelling reason not to. The west end of Sunset, I don't recall what the, what the limits are on parking there now, and it's a different beast to me, because it's not, it's not close to the bus, and of course, than the future train in the same way. At least it's not close to the bus today. And we haven't had any conversation about that in the same way we have about the east end. So, I think you might be opening a can of worms with community reaction. You see folks down at Aljoya and elsewhere who might say, whoa, what's going on? We need to have a whole community conversation about this end if we're gonna go there. And so, my inclination is to tread lightly in that idea of expanding from east end to west end as well, unless there was some pretty compelling information coming back from staff saying it's, it's like the east end enough that we think it can mesh well. My gut tells me it's different, and we should be careful of that.
Okay, I'm gonna try to take away what I've heard, unless Jesse, do you have some comments?
I just wanted to follow up, Mayor Bertland, to your original comment regarding, you know, why do this, the technology. The good news is, if we choose just to move forward with the boat launch, we're taking a critical step in testing technology that we think would be potentially used if town center paid parking were to expand. So, in that regard, one of our goals of the project would in fact be met. We wanted to pilot this technology, as you recall from Zach's previous presentation. This is a platform that most of our neighboring jurisdictions are being, are using, and it's up and down the I-5 corridor. So, in that regard, we do take a step forward, even if we only move forward with the boat launch.
Okay, great. I'm just gonna have one more comment, and then I'm gonna go ahead and try to summarize where, at least I've heard most of council. And that is, the extent to, to which we can create a scenario that allows for island-preferred parking at Tully's would be interesting to me. And I, it seems that we're either in a situation where we have to go through the CUP, or essentially, we leave it unpoliced. Seems to be, it's kind of an either-or situation. But irrespective, I would say, the extent to which the city is, is putting a significant amount of effort into that property, I would also like to see our residents be able to benefit from that effort. So, with that being said, council, is there any disagreement with position number one, confirming direction to move forward with the implementation of paid parking technology at Mercer Island Boat Launch?
No, I would just like to say, though, I would not like to see the city eat a fee on that. I would like to have the end-user pricing adjusted so that whatever we think we can charge, it's 20 cents more.
We will factor that into the fee analysis.
One person, but I think I heard a couple--
Does that, does that come back to us, with the actual fee setting come back to us before it goes live, or?
No, the fees are set by the Parks and Recreation Director.
Okay. All right, do any other council members want to see the fees not absorbed by the city? A double negative? Yeah, the user, the user should, I think, okay, is there consensus that the user pays the? All right, then, okay, Bruce?
The user is gonna pay the fee, the user's gonna pay the whole fee, and part of that is the 25 cents. It's just a question of whether they're gonna see it as a breakout.
Whether it's, it's an add-on--
Whether it's a breakout, and, and I, I was, staffs recommended that it be embedded. I was supporting embedded, such that they don't see it. Lisa's suggesting it be broken out, I believe, if I'm understanding her correctly.
No, I was saying, let's, if we think we can charge 11.50 for the permit, then I think we should price it at 11.75. Right, and not break it out.
Okay.
Embedded, but, but, I mean, in a thoughtful, explicit way internally here, not, but so that it's transparent to the end-user. So, they're not going, ooh, another 25 cents. But so, we're not eating the fee.
It's not transparent to the end-user then, though, is, is the point. I mean, it's invisible to the end-user. Right?
Do you need further clarity?
So, I would say that the cost of operations are captured in that fee, and that includes that transaction fee, and we need to do our fee assessment. We have not done that using this new model and the new service cost, so that will be forthcoming.
Well, and I think that's where we're struggling, is this is the $11 fee that's currently in place, but that does not factor in these additional merchant processing fees. And so, if it stays at $11, then it feels like the city is eating the processing fee.
Understood, and we're not recommending that that fee stay. We will be looking at our fees as we head into 2020, and they will be adjusted.
I think the other element that I would be interested in is this issue of how much goes back to Washita. You know, whether the funding, when, does the city get the money from the vendor? Or is the city collecting the money and then paying the vendor? I don't know how this works.
Yeah, the vendor collects, takes their percentage, their portion out, and then likely remits the remaining balance to us, the 10% will be taken off of that.
So, 10% is based on net to city?
Yes.
Okay. So, now we move into the second portion of it, which is direction on the pilot project at BPRCO. And I think right now, let's separate out, I'm a little bit hesitant, separating BPRCO site from the Sunset Highway. I am hearing mixed feedback from council regarding the BPRCO site. Do we need to do a thumbs up on this one?
And, and before you do, I just wanted to chime in here. If you're doing the rough math, it is potentially not going to cost-recover. I mean, that, it all depends on, on time. And so, I want to be honest with you, this could, we could operate at a net loss when all is said and done. That is part of the reason for a pilot project. I'm not advocating that we go for a net loss, but given the time constraint, right? And you, and the additional costs of the CUP, not to mention the staff time that we didn't even factor into the presentation tonight, we are looking at a net loss over what I predict to be about a year of project time.
Well, let me ask you a question. Could this not come out of the Sound Transit Settlement fees, either for short-term parking or innovative first-and-last-mile solutions?
This is a Sound Transit program, and I apologize if that was not clear. We plan to fund this through the Sound Transit.
So, the CUP--
Yes, the entirety of the project, that's correct.
Okay. But still, it is money that the city is a steward of?
Yes, that wouldn't be otherwise available to us if we spend it this way.
Okay, so let's do a thumbs up. Who's in favor of piloting this at BPRCO?
Well, it's hard, because that's not, that's not what staff's recommendation is. It's either Sunset Highway and BPRCO together, or BPRCO by itself doesn't work.
Well, correct, but I've heard different things from different council members who have suggested splitting it apart. The other option, I hate to say, is to kick it a little bit further down the can and say, I'd like to see the, the money flow on this one. But then that just postpones providing direction.
We would be happy to come back. We would probably have to do it pretty swiftly, and I'm predicting probably the October 7th meeting may have some space available still. However, I, I need to remind you, the CUP process will take three months, and we also have an ordinance that needs to be amended, so we are running up against time here.
Let's do it, okay. So, let me just, let me change the question then. How many people would like to keep the BPRCO site connected to Sunset Highway in terms of their decision-making? We have one, two, three, four, Saleem? I guess it's taking now. All right, so what I'm seeing is that there are four votes for keeping BPRCO site and Sunset with the same approach. That's not saying what the approach actually is. So, with that being said, how many people would like to go ahead and implement a pilot for BPRCO plus Sunset at this time? I see two votes for. How many people would not like to see the pilot at BPRCO at this time? I have to admit, I don't know. Did it, okay, all right.
I am in favor of walking away from option number two. Well, okay, but for today.
This has really gotten quite messy. So, I'm, what I'm hearing from council is you want to take the same approach to BPRCO plus Sunset. The question is whether or not you want to run a pilot or not.
Or do we want more information before we make that?
Arguably, or do we want more information? Okay, Wendy, what do you want?
I'm inclined to walk away, given the lack of return on investment and the short timeframe. I think we can better spend our Sound Transit money elsewhere, and I'd like to see how the pilot works at the boat launch before we figure out what we're gonna do.
Okay, Lisa?
Same.
Benson?
I'm willing to, I would like to get more information.
Okay, Saleem?
I'd like to see the pilot on the cul-de-sac, and preferably, if we do it on the one, we study the second one, and then we do that as well for the four-hour parking.
So, wait, you're leaving--
We, the council voted not to separate them.
I thought that the--
You said, what would I like to see?
I thought the cul-de-sac--
Within the parameters established.
Was gonna have been, I thought the cul-de-sac, the option was gonna be that people could have it all day. That's one of the proposals, it could be up to 10-hour parking, and that's one of the reasons why I'm not in favor of it, because I don't want it to be taken out of the pool of merchant parking.
So, your condition then is that there has to be a max at four hours for the Sunset Highway?
Exactly.
All right, I'm looking for some help here in terms of-- All right, I'm looking for some help here in terms of, I feel like I'm trying to get it together and it fragments.
Zach, can we do the cul-de-sac for the 450 bucks and 10 spots? Does that scale?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Wicker.
Can you? So if there's, if there's a CUP, the CUP process would cost $450.
No.
There's no CUP in the cul-de-sac.
The cul-de-sac is the 450 bucks to-
Per right-of-way permit, correct.
Sign and paint some stripes, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But it does have the minimum monthly $1,500, which starts to blow that up, right? Because you've got too few spots to-
Just to clarify, so it's a one-time fee, whether, when we launch the vendor, it's a $1,500 merchant account setup. That's a one-time fee for any lot that we agree to bring online.
But the cul-de-sac would be policed by Mercer Island?
It would. It's, yeah, that's just a technology setup fee. Let's call it that. The, to bring on an additional lot at any time after we have signed an agreement with Pay by Phone, we pay a $250 next lot fee to Pay by Phone, and then that lot can go live, and they can program what spots are available, or, you know, those 10 spots in that, in that cul-de-sac could go live after the boat launch goes live in January 1st, if that answers your question at all.
Does that answer your question, Wendy?
I'm sorry, so you're saying the incremental cost for an additional lot is only 250 bucks?
Correct.
One time.
One-time fee to bring that lot online, but then any lot?
I thought I saw a significant ongoing monthly fee of some sort.
For the cul-de-sac.
So the, so the monthly minimum is across all parking lots on Mercer Island? The $1,500 is for the enforcement of BP Arco?
Because it's not city-owned.
Correct.
All right, so we can continue.
But your monthly minimum is 250 for all the lots, including the boat launch?
Correct, it's all lots on island.
Right.
And that, that monthly minimum is not, that's monthly minimum fee to the vendor?
The, the city, so however many transactions take place, that will eat at that $250 across all lots on Mercer Island, and the city would pay the difference if they don't meet that $250 minimum in transaction charges on a per-monthly basis. So if we bring in on just the boat launch, we would pay the difference of however many, whatever transaction fee we choose to go with. If that does not hit 250 on a monthly basis, we would pay that difference. If we bring on the Sunset Highway Southeast cul-de-sac, that would now, those transaction charges would go in addition to the boat launch transaction fees and work towards that $250 monthly minimum goal.
So when total revenue for our lots falls below $250 a month, we pay the difference. So if we only bring in $100 with the boat launch, we pay 150 to make up the difference.
Only the boat launch?
If we have 14 lots, they're all contributing to the $250 minimum. If we have one lot, it's contributing to the $250 minimum.
And that $250 minimum, that's the transaction fee, right? The 20 or 25 cents?
That goes towards it, correct.
Well, okay. It just seems to me that this recent discussion that we've had just underscores the need for more information. I'm sorry. I mean, there's, the boat launch, to me, is out of, I mean, we've sort of-
We've settled that one, I think.
We've settled that one, so there's all the discussion, a lot of different options that are in play for BP Arco slash cul-de-sac. Frankly, I'm a little confused, and so, I mean, to me, it would make more sense for the staff to come back with various options to see if it pencils out. And I am, granted, the money may be coming from Sound Transit, I still am a little concerned that it could, you know, be a deficit. And so anyway, I frankly, I'm in for more information. That's why I would like to-
So, Councilmember Wong, I want to be really direct and tell you that I do not believe we're, you know, we're going to produce better numbers at this point. The revenue estimate of $2,000 to $4,000 a month is our best guess, and I am happy to come back. I am still, I'm telling you honestly, that I am concerned this project will not cost-recover based on the way it's scoped, and I want to be transparent with you about that. If there's other information we can present, I'm happy to have Zach do the research. But I do want to make sure I'm being transparent. I don't know that this, with the number of lots we have, will cost-recover over the period of 12 months.
Okay, Bruce?
Given the reticence I've heard, I'm, would be supportive of, I think Wendy was there, maybe Saleem was there, just limit the pilot project in Town Center to the cul-de-sac rather than the BP site. So if that gets us to sufficient support to do that. But I am with Lisa, I don't want it to turn into all day. I'd like it to remain limited in the hours.
I'm agreeing with Bruce. I think that after all this consideration, I too would be comfortable breaking apart Sunset from the BP Arco site and be willing to include it in the pilot and max four hours so that the, so people have the same opportunity they do right now. So that, Lisa, if we capture that right, that's you, me, and Bruce.
But, I mean, what are we really accomplishing then?
We're providing direction for the-
But, I mean, what are we really accomplishing in terms of adding parking? We're not-
We're not adding-
Adding anything.
We're not adding new parking, but we are testing the fee for parking, and so what we're-
In Town Center.
In Town Center.
As well as the boat launch.
And giving folks a chance to give us, you know, then feedback on whether that's working for them or not, too. So we learn something, the public learns something.
Anybody else, any comment?
Is there a chance to do some striping on that cul-de-sac so we can maximize the 10 spots?
Yes.
It's a great question. I don't know if that's, I can get that information and bring it back to you. I don't know off the top of my head if that's doable right now.
Lisa, are you still thinking? And if you need time, that's fine.
Yeah, I was, I mean, I was in favor of BP Arco because I thought it would provide a more organized and disciplined opportunity for people to have parking available to them. Now, taking that out because it doesn't pencil really devalues the cul-de-sac for me in the sense of, you know, it's a, it's a 10 parking space experiment, and we don't need an experiment with the technology because we've already got the boat launch to do that, so.
You know, council, I'm not hearing that there is easy consensus on any of this at this point. And when I say any of this, I mean the cul-de-sac, I mean BP Arco, the need to pilot in the Town Center relative to the technology you've confirmed will be piloted via the boat launch. I'm just, I'm sensing that there's no logical center of gravity here, and perhaps we are therefore recommending de facto to pass on this for now. I've been asking.
And I'm always concerned when we drive Ira out.
Means it's been a desperate night.
I mean, just to, just to move forward, why don't we just do the boat launch and you, you have what you have, right? We're ending the contract with our current provider at the end of the year. It's good timing. Seems like there's no consensus on this parking project at the downtown, so why not move forward at the boat launch and call it a day?
Saleem, any feedback?
I honestly think that if you charge for parking for our parking in the cul-de-sacs, you would see more availability, because what is occurring right now is on the, that western edge is this cross-subsidization of employee parking for commercial enterprises. It will free up spots by charging for those spots.
Well, the West End was never presented to us.
And I understand, I understand. But that's why I support at least studying the West End and piloting the East End, because I think that this is an important step moving forward, looking at our on-street parking capacity in a way that can target kind of that missing gap of commuters that need a spot to go for four hours to run into Seattle, run into Bellevue, wherever it might be, might even be in our Town Center. But at some point, we can't just keep giving it away for free.
Deputy Mayor, if I, if I do made butt-in real quick, I'm looking at the restricted parking map, and on that west end of Sunset Highway Southeast, it is Town Center permit parking in the cul-de-sac on the west end, and then there is a sliver of two-hour parking basically in the middle of Sunset Highway Southeast with the rest of restricted parking.
So let me offer maybe a way forward here. BP Arco is the property that's causing the complication. It requires both the CUP and private enforcement, which is costly. Perhaps we can come back to you on October 7th, having looked at the west end of the cul-de-sac with a complete program for cul-de-sac to cul-de-sac and what that would look like. We don't have the, nearly the time constraints because we're not dealing with the CUP. We will, however, have an ordinance update. I will tell you that our parking ordinance needed to be updated anyway, so this is a good use of staff time. So if there's agreement, we will come back October 7th. We will look at the opportunities cul-de-sac to cul-de-sac and get final confirmation from you as to whether or not to proceed with a pilot parking project, which will require a right-of-way permit and an ordinance amendment. Would that satisfy the council?
Yeah, and just to clarify, and that, that pilot will, will include information cul-de-sac to cul-de-sac?
We, I, yes, we will bring back information end-to-end for you to consider, and then ask you for a final decision on the 7th of what the scope would be going forward with the pilot. So you would have an opportunity to determine how much of that would actually be included.
Okay, Saleem?
And so could you also give us an overview of what Zach just mentioned about the fact that there's already a permit in place on the West End, and surely that has a bunch of labor and no technology involved, and is displacing that, and what's our path forward for that?
Yes, and we're flying blind tonight without that information in front of us, so I'd feel better coming back with more information.
Okay, council, any further question?
No.
We have a plan.
All right, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you both. Well, well done, Zach. You, you kept a straight line in all of that. So we now move on to other business, and for that, we have the planning schedule.
Apologies. All right. You know, really nothing remarkable that stands out that I need to report on, except to remind you, the October 1st City Council meeting is canceled. We've rescheduled for October 7th. Council, I will also point out, I've been working with the leadership team to make sure agenda items are being added through the end of the year, so you'll note that our council meetings are actually now quite full. We are trying our best to hold to one council meeting in December for holiday sanity for everyone. Other than that, I will keep it short.
Okay. Council, any questions regarding planning and schedule? Okay, super. So are there any upcoming council member absences to report? None? Okay, none planned so far. I'm also going to go back and then just remind our listeners, there's two open board positions, one with the Design Commission and the other with the Open Space Conservancy Trust Board of Directors. The applications are available online with a deadline of September 18th, and then we hope to have both positions filled October 7th. Councilmember reports, Dave?
None.
Bruce?
None.
Benson?
None.
Lisa? Wendy? All right, so Art and Corks Friday night, as is the first home football game, so there's plenty of good things to be done on the island. So there we go. All right, so with that, the City Council will now recess into executive session for approximately 60 minutes to discuss pending or potential litigation with legal counsel pursuant to RCW 4231101I. No action is expected. And it's 9:42. Okay, so we are going to be missing Councilmember Wezentiner on September 17th.